Okay, we're on. Jim?
We're on. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. This is the April 5th, 2021, meeting of the Milis Select Board. Joining me this evening, along with myself, Jim McCaffrey, the Board Chair, Mr. Pete Jermaine, who is the Vice Chair, and Ms. Erin Underhill, who is our Clerk. Also joining us are Mike Kozinski, our Town Administrator, and our Operations Manager, Karen Buray. Yes, one of the guests that are going to join us tonight, and I will introduce them as their items come up on the agenda. But before we begin, we have two announcements we'd like to make. The first one is going to be about Milis Beautification Day, and I'm going to ask Karen to just speak to the community about the preparations for this Milis Beautification Day.
So, as you can see on the screen, the Milis Lions Club and the Milis Garden Club are hosting Milis Beautification Day on Saturday, April 24th. It will run from 9:00 a.m. to noon. We invite all Milis residents to join in on this event. You can email your team, the name of your team, and your waiver to milispautificationday@gmail.com, as shown here. You can also find more information on the homepage of our website. And we're looking forward to cleaning up Milis a little bit for the spring and going into a good summer.
Well, thank you, Karen. This is a reminder to folks. We approved this last week. We're going to remind you again tonight, and we're going to remind you again next week to sign up and get involved in the Milis cleanup. So, thank you very much. Thank you very much to the Garden Club and the Lions for taking the lead, as well as DPW and others. We also have an announcement this evening from the Board of Health. Kathy Lannan is on and wants to make an announcement to the community.
Hold on one minute. Oh, she's on.
Thought I saw her on.
Maybe. Maybe did I not admit her?
Says Kathleen Lannan.
She is there. She's on. I don't know where she went. Hold on one minute. And I see that, I see her, her microphone is unmuted. Kathy Lannan, can you hear us? I don't think Kathy can hear us, or she cannot speak, unfortunately.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. Let me ask her to unmute again. Maybe it's...
Are you waiting for me?
We're waiting for Kathy Lannan. Oh, there she is. You're unmuted. She's unmuted, but I can't. Kathy, I don't know if your microphone is working. Well...
Well, why don't we move on to the next item? If she gets the technology fixed, we can ask her to make a statement between items here on our agenda.
I will try texting her from here.
Okay. So, the first scheduled appointment for this evening is with Mr. Weiss to talk about the Green Communities' competitive grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I'm here to ask the Board to, I'm Bob Weiss, the Town's Energy Manager, asking the Board to authorize and to have the Chair sign our 2021 Green Communities' Grant application. Now, last week, the Milis Energy Committee did give its, the application, their endorsement. This year, the total projects are going to cost $160,000, but the grant from the state will be for $133,000. For 100, utilities will contribute $22,000. The town this year will be contributing about $6,000, $6,100. That's about 4% of the total cost. We have 10 projects this year. We're going to finish the energy management system at the Veterans Memorial Building. We're going to replace the old haylight bulbs with LEDs for the decorative streetlights. Those are ADH streetlights, and also in the municipal parking lot. We're going to doing considerable weather stripping and door replacement for a lot of DPW facilities. And we're also going to train a couple of our staff members for building operations management. So, a lot of great projects here. We don't have those great big low-hanging fruit that we used to have, but it's going to be a good, a big help for our energy efficiency in the town.
Very good. Thank you. And this is year three, or four, or five of these grants? I mean, we've had great success.
We, the first year, we had a designation grant, and since then, we've had three competitive grants, and that's what this is. This is, this will be our fourth competitive grant.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Questions from my colleagues on the Board?
No questions. Just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work. This is great.
Thank you, Ms. Underhill.
I'll second what Ms. Underhill just said.
And thank you, Mr. Jermaine.
With that, I mean, what you're asking us to do is to vote to support the application and to designate the Board Chair to sign the certification of application, right?
That is correct.
So, I'll make that motion that we support the application for the grant and instruct the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, or Select Board, to complete the certification.
Seconded.
So, it's been moved and seconded. I will call the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, Bob, very much.
Thank you, folks, very much. And I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Mr. Jermaine also because he has participated on our Milis Energy Committee, and his help has been very valuable.
And we have to, send this in by Friday, right?
That is correct.
So, we better ask the Chair to get down to the Town Hall to sign it. Okay, Chair. Get down there to sign it. Okay. Okay. The next item we have on our agenda, or the next several items, really are going to be dealing with budget proposals, the budget documentation, the town meeting, all of which are, you know, related to the financial presentation to the town, to the Finance Committee, to the town, the town meeting. So, we pretty much devoted the balance of our agenda tonight to the budget and preparations for the warrant finalization, as well as the town meeting itself. And then we will have some conversation around some potential grant applications with respect to the federal, some federal rules, and we do have a collective bargaining agreement to confirm. But in any event, we're going to start this. I'm going to make one more attempt to see if Kathy Lannan is on. I saw her name again. Doesn't seem to be the case. Okay, well, then we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the discussion of the potential purpose of the open space on Village Street.
Are you unable to get on?
Last week, our last meeting, this Board voted to confirm that we will place the, on the warrant, an article for the purchase of this property by the town under the rights and aspirations, if you will, that are granted us by Chapter 61A. Tonight, we'll talk about some more.
All right. Hold on one minute.
And we want to talk about some specifics, because when we go to the town meeting, not only will the town meeting consider the article itself, but we'll consider a financing plan for the purchase of the property.
Yeah, but I'm going to put you, I have the speaker here. So, you'll be able, they'll be able to hear you through me.
I did unmute. I couldn't hear you.
No, no, no. They'll be able to hear you through my phone.
So, what we have in front of us now is an email from Town Administrator. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kozinski.
Excuse me one minute, Jim. Jim, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do have Kathy Lannan here on my phone. If you want her to speak quickly to this.
Yeah, I think that would be good. She can speak long if she wants, but I mean, we want to make sure that we can get her in.
All right. See if you can hear her. I'm holding my phone up to the microphone.
Okay.
I'm sorry. My computer audio wasn't working. I just wanted to announce that we did get vaccine allocation from the state, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and we are calling people who need to be vaccinated in home. If we haven't contacted you, you can call the Board of Health or the Council on Aging, and also anyone over 65 who hasn't been vaccinated or is having trouble getting vaccination, just call Board of Health or the Council on Aging, and we'll see if we can help. That's it. Thank you.
Board of Health or?
Or the Council on Aging.
Okay, great. Well, that's very important news. Thank you, Kathy, for sharing that with us. That information is on, will go on the website, or it's already on our website?
When John comes back tomorrow, it'll be on the website.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much again for your persistence tonight and your persistence throughout the last, what is it, 15 months or so? In addition to the last 20 years or so. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay. Mr. Kozinski, back to you on the consideration of the financing proposal for the 61A property at Village Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board in their packet does have a list of the different options as presented by the Town Treasurer for bonding this item, should the town meeting approve it. There's different terms, a 20-year term, 25-year, and a 30-year term. There's also two different ways presented for the payment, and that is through equal principal, as well as level debt service. And the Town Treasurer is recommending a 20-year equal principal bonding approach, should this be approved. This will save the town over $300,000 in interest costs by going this way versus the 30-year level payment. And so, I think, Karen, if you scroll down, I think it's the last bond debt service page in the packet.
Is that it? Nope.
Go back one.
Oops. I can turn it if I need to. This one?
I believe, yes. That's, that's the chart right there that would show the debt service as the Treasurer is recommending it.
So, this basically, all these options are options to borrow the money and issue bonds to pay it off for the open space purchase over a period of between 20 and 30 years. This one is the recommendation from the Treasurer based upon her view of what is the most cost-effective way of borrowing this money and paying it down? Because I understand it, a little hard to see the numbers, but we're talking here about a level principal payment. So, the question is, in terms of this particular schedule of events, what is the cost to the town in the current fiscal year?
So, the current cost, I believe, in the current fiscal year is $10,000.
So, what happens is that we exercise the option if this is asked, we borrow the money, we close on the purchase and sale agreement, and we begin payment, first of all, of an interest-only payment in year number one, and then in subsequent years, again, the numbers are really small, we're in the mid to upper $60,000 a year or so for the next years, which is a level payment of the principal and a 2% per year interest charge on the balance of the principal, so it does decline a little bit over time.
Yes. The interest payments will decline over time.
Okay. The other, the other, the other options are there. I mean, they result in either longer payment or lower payments, lower annual payments. The lower annual payments would typically be for a bond of a longer duration, so we're still paying the $1 million. But this recommendation from the Treasurer is one that she believes is the most prudent and would ultimately be the most cost-effective because it reduces interest cost over time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, again, questions from the Board about the proposal?
Chairman McCaffrey?
Ms. Underhill, yes.
I just wanted to note that there is a more updated version of this because, looking at this one, it says $15,000 for the first payment, and it would, it would in fact be 10.
Yes.
Right.
And the total paid out is less, too, obviously.
Yeah. There, we did get some tweaking today, slightly less, but this, this basically gives the overview of it. And, and again, the, just to reaffirm for those that they have not been keeping track of this, this would not, it's not being proposed as a debt exclusion. This would be within the town's current Prop. 2.5 cap. So, it'd be within the cap. Yeah.
Chairman, it doesn't result in an additional charge, but it does, it does certainly result in a cost.
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to ask, that you clarified that. It states in here the cost per taxpayer over 20 years by saying there will not be an additional cost to the taxpayer. The clarification there is, it's not that we're not paying through the taxes, but your taxes, as presently charged, would be covering the debt on an annual basis. So, you're not going to have an additional tax charge for this. For anyone who questions it, of course, that means that that amount of money, you know, say $70,000 or $60,000, is being paid out of the then-tax fund, so that's not available for other things. But it's important to understand what that distinction is. I've had several people question what it meant to have, I'm not going to be charged taxes. Of course you are. But it's not seen that way.
Well, it's not, it's certainly not called out as an override would, right? The tax bill would be separate, separately designated. It's included, it would be included in the overall debt service for the town, which involves a number of items from long-term purchases of equipment. The major buildings that we have constructed have been subject to debt exclusions, like the police station, the fire station, flyground school. So, they are carried separately, and they were clearly above and beyond the Prop. 2.5 ceiling. This one would not be.
Right. So, you're not going to see it, you're not going to see it as a separate item on your tax bill, get a separate charge for it.
But people have asked, in this kind of cost, what is it, what is the underlying cost to the average taxpayer? Now, we have run those numbers. And we're trying to be fully transparent here because the question is a legitimate one. What, what is the cost? And do we have it, we have it in our packet?
We do, yes. Karen, I think it's the next page. Keep going. That's it.
All right. A little better.
Okay.
So, for example, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Can we, could we enlarge that a little bit?
Sure.
Just for purposes of seeing if people can see it better? Okay. Good. Thanks.
A little better. Sorry.
So, if someone owns an average single-family home in Milis, which the assessors have pegged at $433,509, then during the first full year of the payment, that, that homeowner, $21.78 of their tax bill would go towards the debt service of this item. And again, that's within the current cap. So, it just means that of their current tax bill, that's how much of that would, would go towards this item.
Right. Other questions from the Board members? Because we, you know, we have other options presented to us, and we can, you know, take a look at those as well. This is just the one that has been recommended by our Treasurer and the Town Administrator as the most cost-effective way of purchasing the property.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Underhill, yes.
I, I happen to think that their recommendations are sound. They seem good. I'm, I'm fine with their recommendations, should this be something that goes forward. I just wanted to, and I'm not trying to beat a horse here, but I just wanted to say one more, in a different way, that the first full year, $21.78 would be what would come out of taxes to go towards this, but people would not be paying an additional $21.78. They'd be paying their regular tax bill. The tax bill would not be going up because of this purchase.
Right. That's correct. Thank you. Okay. Any questions from members of the community? I see you have a number of folks on. Okay. I guess at this point, we don't have any further comments from members in the community. So, at this stage of the game, I would ask the Board, we're willing to take action, which is, again, to recommend that the warrant article be funded by this 20-year bond at an equal percentage, and it is, an interest rate estimated at 2%, which is, again, still a very low interest rate.
Like to make a motion?
Yes.
I move that, I'm not going to do the wording right. I move that we approve, I move that we approve recommendation of the article at town meeting, and should it be approved by town meeting, that the funding source would be the 20-year bonds at equal principal.
I'll second that.
So, it's been moved and seconded for the Board to approve the recommendation to fund purchase of the property, should it be voted on, voted on in favor of it at the town meeting for the $1 million general obligation bond, 20-year bond, equal principal with an interest rate of, well, the interest rate subject to change, so. So, that is been moved and seconded. I will call the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. So, at this point, what we have is a warrant article, which will be presented to town meeting. We will have a funding recommendation for town meeting to consider so that it can fully consider both the merits of, I guess, the qualitative component of the purchase, as well as the quantitative component of the purchase. And this information will be shared with the Finance Committee, as well as shared with all the residents who will be receiving their Finance Committee report during April. Okay. Thank you very much. So, the next item we have on our agenda moves us to a discussion of the Town Administrator's recommendation for the fiscal '21, actually, it's fiscal '22 budget. So, I will turn it over to Mr. Kozinski to bring us up to date on his recommendations for the budget, and then we will have a conversation to go through the items and have that, have that information discussed by the Board members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is actually no, no material changes to the budget itself since your meeting last week. I'd be happy to go over any of the particulars again or answer any questions that the Board may have. Just very briefly, just hearing forward from the conversation from last week, you know, the Finance Director and I put together the revenue estimates based upon the reasonable assumptions we expect from new growth, local receipts, local aid. And using those, we put together a budget which incorporates the cap of 4% on municipal operations and the school budget. And also, at the Board's direction and guidance, we've included a number of above-level service items for consideration, which are also listed within your packet of materials. And we've also listed all the requests for Marijuana Impact Funds and the, our recommendation for funding and the timing of that funding. And with all of that, we, we are presenting, the Finance Director and I are presenting a balanced budget. And as I mentioned, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board may have. We have tweaked a few budgetary items, but those are really included in the annual town meeting warrant, warrant articles. So, unless you want me to take those up here, I would hold it off on those until we discuss the warrant overall.
Yeah. I would prefer to discuss the warrant when we get to that, that item on our agenda. This is really the comprehensive budget, and obviously, we start with the revenue projections. And I'd like to have the conversation about, not only the revenue projections, but also the items in the budget that individual members may want to discuss. I'd like to have this discussion in the context of our undertaking with the School Committee and the Finance Committee. The initial pass here is that we work with a 4% revenue increase or budget increase, expenditure increase, I guess, is the better way to put it, for the municipal services after netting out shared services like benefits and whatnot, to determine what it is that falls within that agreement. And then to discuss, as we go through it, the items which would fall outside of it, which would therefore be subject to conversation with the School Committee and the Finance Committee regarding some funding that may be available after the 4% obligation and the shared service obligations are paid for. So, with that, I think that if we could spend a minute or two on the FY 2022 budget request above-level service so that I can understand and the community can understand what it is that falls within the 4% and what it is that would fall outside of it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If you look at the, Karen, if you could scroll down to the FY 2022 budget request above-level service. There you go. And look down to the middle of that page where it starts Capital Planning Committee. So, I'll talk very briefly about each one of these and answer any questions that you may have. So, the first item, the Capital Planning Committee has requested.
Before you do that, Mr. Kozinski, I'd like you to talk about the ones on the top, too.
Very well.
And since they are going to be above-level service, what is the funding source for those, those recommendations?
Good. So, at the very top on a department, and you see the first three items are from the Fire Department.
Right.
There are three items there. The Fire Department does have preventative maintenance contracts, consulting services, and medical supplies. Those items come up to a total of $33,000, and as anticipated, they will be funded from the ambulance revolving fund.
Now, anticipated means what and when?
It means that, that in fiscal year '22, they will, these items will be, will be paid for out of the ambulance revolving account for, during fiscal year '22, for those three budget items.
And the ambulance revolving account has to be paid, has to be utilized for ambulance-related and department-related expenses. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Because there are a whole bunch of revolving funds, which we'll talk about when we get to the warrant articles. And those, those revolving funds are authorized. And this is, this would be an expenditure And this is, this would be an expenditure essentially outside of a budget agreement with a, with a four percent. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is a specialized revolving fund. The town does have several of these. The school has a number of them in their specific, to specific departments and, and oftentimes, specific purposes within those departments.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jermaine?
Perhaps, Mr. Town Administrator, you can explain for those who don't know what the revolving fund is and how it gets funded.
Certainly. The revolving fund is established to take in revenue related to ambulance fees and rescue fees that, from the fire department going out and transporting individuals from a scene to the hospital in the rescue. And there is a fee associated with that usually charged to insurance company of an individual. Those payments go into a revolving fund and those, those, that account can pay bills related to the ambulance service. So that could be the ambulance itself, that could be equipment, fuel, personnel time, supplies, anything related to the ambulance service. Thank you very much.
And the, the thirty-three thousand dollars is part of the five hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, all right, that's an expenditure, but it, you know, it to some way of thinking, it should be analyzed separately from our, our operating agreement.
Yes, it's outside of the general fund revenue calculations.
Okay. All right, now the next one.
So the next three items have to do with capital items for the assessing department, the fire department, and the police department. These, these items were submitted to the capital committee for funding. The capital committee did review and ranked these items fairly highly in their review. However, we do not have any available funding in free cash for these items in the spring, so we anticipate that these items be put forward at the fall town meeting for funding with the use of free cash in the fall.
Okay, so they're on the priority list, but they're not going to be presented to the town meeting in the spring for funding?
For lack of funding, yes. And these are, these are, yes, these are considered above-level services requests.
And if the free cash is available in the fall, it would potentially be considered for appropriation in the fall from the free cash certified as of the end of this fiscal year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the free cash available now is less than it was when it was certified because we spent a bunch of it in November. So it's not here to be spent in May.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I know an obvious question some people may ask is the fire ambulance. If there's a revolving fund, and if this is a necessary piece of equipment, can the ambulance fund start off saying that we'll spend sixty thousand, assuming there's available funds in there? Because there is at least, as I understand it, about a six-month or maybe even a year lag time, a leave time before you can get an ambulance once you order it. So that would be a question that I think we have got to answer.
And that's, and that's, that is an excellent question and a good point, and that was the discussion the finance director and I did have with the fire chief. The fire chief, there's two aspects here. When the fire chief feels, although important, this item could wait till the fall town meeting and still be within an acceptable timeframe. Also, in some discussions with the fire chief, you know, I think we want to have some policy discussions about whether this particular ambulance would be replaced within the revolving fund or outside. As you know, they haven't brought on four additional firefighter paramedics through a federal grant, but that federal grant will, will run out after a period of time. And they are looking at trying to be at that ambulance revolving account to a number that it will fully absorb those costs by the time the federal grant is no longer in effect. So that, that was some discussions that we've had with the fire chief that I'm sure we'll be having over the summer and into the fall. I would think that if funding is not available at the fall town meeting through free cash, that the option you just stated, Mr. Jermaine, would be something that we have to take a careful look at to move ahead with at that time.
I'd like to follow up on a couple more questions. For the police cruiser, what is the status of the existing cruiser that it would replace? And can they, again, continue to operate effectively if we delay this by six months?
Yes, again, excellent question. We did have this conversation with the police chief. Similar answer. There may be some small elevation in costs for repair over the next six months. You know, if things, if things had to be fixed or repaired on the, on the current cruiser that's lined up to be replaced. But the chief also felt it was doable to have this done at the, at the fall town meeting.
I bring this up because from another perspective, as I recall, and I'm sure somebody will correct me with respect to the capital planning, that there is now in place a standard procedure, I'd say, to replace these vehicles on a regular basis. And I just want to ensure that we are not suddenly piling up to the point where it's not possible to meet those needs. Can you explain if we are moving along, continuing along those lines?
Yeah, I believe that is going along well. Again, in our conversation with the police chief, he felt that everything was possible to move ahead with a cruiser replacement at the fall town meeting and still be able to move ahead next spring. Within that schedule, he'd be able to maintain the schedule he was seeking.
Thank you. My last question comes to the assessor's office. In the scheme of things, it's a relatively low amount of money. What is the impact on that office if we do not fund that at this time?
Carol, did you want to respond to that?
Sure. Carol Johnston, Finance Director. Right now, you know, it, it won't be a big sacrifice for us to be able to wait till the, till the fall. We just want to be sure that it's something that the town can afford. Even though it's a one-time purchase of eighteen thousand, it's an annual license fee of approximately five thousand dollars. So we'd want to be sure that the, you know, town can fund us with, for the initial payment. And then it's something we'd have to add to our budget on the go forward. So for, for right now, for us to wait, that's not a problem.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This one also had a bit of a lesser priority when the capital planning committee prioritized the capital expenditures. Although I think that the, the reason for this request is so that our assessor can do much more rapid and accurate assessment process, actually changing records as she visits properties and assesses them for market value and whatnot. So, I mean, there is a revenue implication here. It's a little bit, a little bit, I don't want to say remote. It's, it's not as direct as the ambulance charge. But it is, I do believe, part of a reasonable and efficient operation of the assessor's department, which is always an important department, but in the town with so many residential and commercial properties coming online, it really is important for us, hopefully in the fall, to be able to essentially automate some of these functions. So hopefully, we can.
Right. You're correct. It does eliminate duplication of effort. Right now, she has to go out to the particular house and mark everything down, then bring it back to the office and then put it in the computer. Using the iPad, she'd be able to do it right there at the site. She'd also be able, this unit will allow her to take a picture of the home instead of having to carry a camera, bring it back and load it. Everything would be uploaded immediately into our vision software, which is where we house all of our real estate software information. So it would be a big advantage for the, for the assessor. We do understand why we need to wait. You know, if funding is unavailable, funding is unavailable. But we would appreciate being able to have this unit.
And it's not a, a twenty thousand dollar iPad?
No, it's not a twenty thousand dollar iPad. There's software that goes along with it. There's, you know, all sorts of different technology that's built into it. So it's not just an iPad.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, so, again, summarizing this in terms of the proposal for the spring town meeting, this hundred thousand dollar amount is not going to be proposed for spring town meeting either. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
It's prudent to keep track of it, but it's not going to be on the budget request for this year. I mean, for the spring. I mean, when the fall comes and free cash is certified, then there's a different dynamic and a different dialogue that'll occur. Okay, the next item, which is the Conservation Commission, which is improvements to Pleasant Meadows Farm in the Village Street Conservation Area.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that, that I believe entails some, some onsite improvements to some structures, some furniture, signage. And we're recommending that the Conservation Commission seek assistance through the Community Preservation account in the fall and determining on how that, on, on either that or free cash at the fall town meeting. So we're, we're recommending that for the fall.
Okay. And then we have the, I'm sorry, questions from the board members on that item. Then let's go to the next one, which is the job reclassification in the DPW.
Yes, this is part of some of the recommendations with work with Community Paradigm to make some adjustments to the staffing within the DPW. Most of the impact there would be outside the, the general fund. And in speaking with the DPW director, he'd be able to shift around his budget in order to maintain that service without any additional funding within his budget. So it would not be requests above the four percent cap.
Okay. But he would still be able to reclassify this person?
Yes.
Okay. So that's within the cap?
That's within the cap.
Okay. Then we have the next project of things here, Capital Planning Committee.
Yes, so the Capital Planning Committee, as you know, Mr. Chairman, the, the committee has requested some administrative support up until this point. They've, they've worked without, other than, you know, some of the technical support from the finance director and I, they have worked without any administrative support, which has put some burden on the chair and and the committee. And I think the feeling was, and I agree, that the level of work that the committee is doing and the need for additional assistance is certainly there. And they've requested three thousand dollars for that administrative support, and that would actually be within the four percent cap. But it is an additional above-level service request.
Well, I certainly have no question that it's needed, but I'm on the committee, so. The amount of work that that committee is executing is amazing, and I think they actually certainly have demonstrated their value to the community, and if we can give them the, the support, I think that would be very helpful. But that's within the cap as well, right?
That is within cap. That's correct.
Okay.
So we haven't, I don't think we talked about anything that's outside the cap.
So far, yeah, so far, we're not asking for anything above the four percent. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
But unfortunately, we're not going to stop here.
No.
Okay.
So the next item, Mr. Chair, is the Council on Aging.
Yep.
As part of the board's priorities and the request from the senior director and the Council on Aging, they are seeking additional hours to be able to be fully open till four P M, Monday through Thursday. In order to effectively accomplish this, they are requesting an additional forty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And that would be above the four percent cap if that were to be funded.
Now, they would still be open on Friday mornings, right?
Yes, but they'd be open eight to four, or the other, the other four days.
The other days, right.
Yes.
So have a full service senior center in place for the full day, Monday through Thursday, and open half-day Friday, which is when the town hall is open.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I certainly have, any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
Do we have any idea what utilization of the senior center is under normal days? And how many people are likely to be willing to use it if we open it for the full day? And are we going to do anything in the community to try to encourage more seniors to take advantage of what this center has to offer?
Well, I would, I would certainly hope so. I would say that the, you know, we've been living in strange times the past thirteen months. But I know that the center was very heavily used prior to COVID, and they've still been active in many ways within the restrictions currently upon them. We can certainly look to try to get some numbers for the board as to the usage levels prior to COVID. I can certainly seek those out and provide those for the board.
Thank you. I'm not overly concerned on the numbers. My major concern is that we make the community fully aware of the kinds of opportunities this affords the seniors and that we can encourage the seniors to take advantage of the fact that we are going to be opening it. I think it's a great opportunity, but I would hope that it will get utilized.
Well, my feeling is that there is probably a tremendously positive, powerful message to our senior population in this town when we emerge from COVID to allow them to utilize the center under normal operating hours. I know that the Council on Aging has been developing a broad range of ideas for programs, both with respect to this, this senior center, as well as when we reengage in the discussion of the new senior center. So I'm, I'm feeling confident that that this would be available and would be promoted and folks would take advantage of it. And I just think the timing is appropriate. I, I do, I guess it's a question. I, I don't know whether it's the right question or not, but it seems to me at this point, it's unlikely that we'd be able to reopen on July first. So I think what I'd like to understand also from the, the, the director is, you know, if we were to defer opening till, say, September first, is that a sensible thing? Simply because, you know, if, if we can't open the building, then there's no point in extending the hours, I guess. I'm pretty sure that we have the data on the usage and the programs that are used and those kinds of things. And there are a number of programs, like, you know, I'm certainly aware of where there are capacity restrictions. We can't, you know, we can't serve adequately because of some conditions with the kitchen and whatnot. And it's beyond just who comes at the center. It's, it's the staff being able to not only come to the center, the service people come to the center, but do the outreach to the community to try and engage our, our seniors and make sure that they can, you know, support themselves.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes, Ms. Underhill.
I had sort of a similar question to what you just said. And I, I certainly am in favor of expanding the services and the And I certainly am in favor of expanding the services and the for the hours. I was also curious as to when that makes sense. Like, I understand now that perhaps we this would fund, you know, the work people, work manpower, work hours, whatnot, to continue to provide the services that they can provide without, you know, remotely, you know, because you would still need to pay the people to do that. I wasn't sure if there was a difference between cost to run the programs they do run currently or provide the support they currently are able to provide between that and opening, opening.
Well, certainly, we could bring the Director back in for conversation, Mr. Zidzinski, if we could respond to some of these questions.
Absolutely.
I would also like to add that it would be great to see that transportation is available perhaps more readily than it has been for our seniors. I encourage them to take advantage of what we can offer. But sometimes it's also necessary to provide them with the transportation so they can take advantage of that. That is a part of it. We need to understand how much more is needed and what the cost would be if that's necessary to deal with also.
I guess part of this, then, is, you know, what's included in the forty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-eight cents? When it says open the building, you know, what does that mean in terms of services provided, transportation related, those kinds of things?
Right, to the extent that, you know, the Senior Director could expound upon those beyond, you know, what was done originally back in February. I could certainly ask her to come in, be a little more specific, and talk about the specific impacts of what this these additional funds would do for the for this center.
Okay.
I could ask her to come in at your meeting on the twelfth if you like.
I think the sooner the better, yes. Okay, so moving on to the next item. But this forty-eight thousand is now we're talking about above service and above four percent?
Yes.
Okay.
The next item, Mr. Chair, is from the Department of Public Works for a for one full-time heavy equipment operator, laborer with the clothing allowance. As has been discussed, the DPW is is a bit strained in some areas of its operation. I know that the report that was provided for Community Paradigm, they recommended that the town look at at least additional two DPW staff to help in the general operation of the department. This would be certainly a big step in that direction if we're able to move forward with this. It also would certainly allow the current staff that have more heavier focus on water and sewer enterprise to be able to focus more of their time in those areas. So it's certainly something, based on all these factors that I'm recommending, and this also would be an above level of service item for the budget.
Okay. Just to go back to the benefits eligibility. With respect to the Senior Center, does this add benefits eligibility? Or it just the person whose the people we're talking about here are already eligible for benefits?
No, it would add one benefit in position.
Okay, and the same with the DPW position?
That's correct.
And the rough cost of that is?
It's tough, but it can range from as little as ten thousand mill up to the twenty-five thousand range, depending on the type of health insurance that individual applies.
Okay, so it's a substantial amount, no matter how you look at it?
Yes.
Okay. But in the case of the Senior Center, it's not a new person. It's a new, it's a person, it's a head count. Well, it is a, I guess, a halftime person is counted as halftime. Never mind. It's just a matter of norm culture.
Yeah, I think the best way would be for the Director to come in and explain the details of that at your next meeting for the for the Senior Center, because I think there's some nuance to that. And I'd rather her come in and explain that. For the DPW, it's pretty straightforward. It's just one new full-time additional person.
Right. Okay.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
Yeah, before we leave that, I'd like to get a better understanding of the implications if we were not to fund that. I'm not suggesting we aren't going to. That's not my point. But I think we need to understand what is it that this individual will be doing that is presently being performed in another man in another way.
In my discussions with the DPW Director on the operations within the department, this individual is focused on general fund-related tasks within the town. It would be pot hole repair. It would be cutting of grass, cutting of brush, general repair, and items to try to allow the non-general fund workers to be able to focus more on the enterprise fund-related items. So I believe that is the focus of this person. It's to be for the highway or general fund-related operations within the department. Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item, I know the board has discussed before. This has to do with one of the staff's positions within the Select Board Town Administrator's Office, the Department Assistant Two position, which is currently at eighteen hours per week. As you know, this office has been strained to keep up with the the level of of work that's coming through here. And it has caused us to defer or indefinitely delay some other tasks in here. I think that would be a great benefit to the community. So in this situation, we'd be increasing a position from eighteen to thirty-five hours a week. There would be a wage increase cost of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, as well as a full-time employee benefits. So that's, so essentially, I don't know if we want to go through this again as we did the last time, but essentially, this position would be able to take on tasks, some of the tasks that are currently done by the Operations Manager, which would free her up to take on some of the tasks that currently just aren't getting done because of the lack of of time and availability, as well as picking up some of the tasks that I have to do because there's no one else to delegate them to. So this would certainly free up my time to seek additional grants, do more work on human resource issues that really aren't getting done in a timely manner and take on other important strategic tasks within the community.
Okay, I think we do understand that one.
Any other, any questions on that item?
No.
The next item is with the Recreation Department. Currently, we have a Department Assistant who is ten hours per week within the Rec Department, and they are funded by the Revolving Fund. There has been a request from the Recreation Commission and the Director to have that position funded through the General Fund. And we have had discussions in the past to look at transferring some of the funding of of that department over to the General Fund. This would this would move that position over to the General Fund in the amount of eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. So this essentially, this is an individual who already has benefits through the town. Right now, a portion of those benefits are funded through the Recreation Revolving Fund. If if that is, if that this position is funded through the General Fund, then now one hundred percent of those benefits would be through the General Fund.
Okay.
Versus just a portion. And that is above-level service request.
I mean, it's above-level service. It's just moving the money from the Revolving Fund to the General Fund, right?
That's correct.
There's no difference in the service.
No difference in hours of the service. It's just that the funding source would be changed from dependent on the Revolving Fund over to the General Fund.
Right. Relieve some pressure on that Revolving Fund, basically.
That's correct.
Okay. Questions from the board? Mr. Jermaine?
When it comes to the Revolving Fund, and I understand relieve some pressure, what kinds of money are we bringing into the Revolving Fund on a regular basis? This obviously makes those funds available for other things within the Recreation Department, which, by the way, I want to make a quick comment, that the Easter Bunny gifting that went on this weekend and some of the other activities, I think, are absolutely outstanding. So I'm just asking for clarification on the funding apparatus here.
Well, I can't, I mean, I don't know if the Finance Director has the numbers available, but I can certainly say that the last year has been to to beat myself a pretty unusual year. But we could certainly take a look at the historical revenue and expenditures within that department over the past three years. We could certainly take a look at that as well. And I believe the last year certainly has been a very difficult year for the department because a lot of their activities were no longer activities they could easily charge a fee for. So that has, that has definitely puts a strain on that department. And I think there's there's certainly a desire to be able to do some general service work in in the Recreation Department that doesn't necessarily charge fees. And that is certainly a policy discussion for the board. But if you'd like, we could certainly get some backup information for their revolving account over the past several years.
Thank you. I think that would be excellent. I think the community just needs to understand the things that they perform aren't totally coming for free. But what is being done, and I will specifically mention what I see from Chris Fogarty, has been outstanding. So I certainly have no problem with what's being asked, but I think we also need to understand what that fund is bringing in just so we understand in complete feeling for what can be done in this area.
Very well. I can work with the Finance Director to to put together some put together the numbers for the board as to their history over the past several years.
Thank you.
As a matter of scale, I mean, the authorization is up to two hundred thousand in annual Revolving Fund expenditures. And the Revolving Fund is fees collected from participants in programs. I mean, that's what the funding source is. And this would move some of that to the to the the General Fund. We already pay fifty percent of the Director's salary, I believe. And we move more of the Assistant's salary over to the General Fund. And it gets to the policy question is how much of this should the community as a whole step up and fund? I don't think the proposal here is to move away from a user finance program, but, you know, maybe the balance needs to be reset. I think that's what this is really about. And what I'm trying to say is it's not necessarily just because, I don't think it's solely because COVID was a difficult year. I think there's issues around the fund itself that we should be looking at as we move forward. Okay, next one, within the cap.
The next one, Mr. Chairman, is for the Town Clerk's Office, the Dog Licensing Software. They have requested to obtain the dog licensing software, which is the same, which is used by Medway, which we share services of an animal control officer. And we think that makes perfect sense, and we should move forward with that. And that is above-level service request that we're actually should be able to fund within the four percent cap.
Yep.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is for the Veterans. Increase the Veteran Service Services Officer's stipend. Increase it in the amount of six thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and twelve cents. I think the VSO had a very compelling presentation to the board recently in regards to the operation of that service sector within the town government and the increased services that the veterans in the community are getting. And we feel that the modest increase is well worth it for that enhanced level of of service and hours per week. And that would be above-level service through the General Fund. It would not, it would not be a benefit impacted position.
Okay, I believe in looking into this, we have an estimate as to the amount of funding that's being generated by the program that the Veterans Agent described to the board and to the Finance Committee in terms of reimbursements from the state and the federal government. I believe the number was in excess of eighty thousand dollars for this fiscal year, which does have some look back years in it. I see that Finance Three has taken their mute off, and maybe they can, the mysterious Finance Three can tell us what the real story is.
Sorry, but I couldn't get it to put my name up there. Next time, I'll try harder. It's Carol Johnston, the Finance Director. It typically, we get probably around thirty-five thousand or to thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. We're getting that from the from the very feedback of the veterans beneficent are paid out. So as was explained by the Veteran Service Officer, the money's paid out by the town to the veterans who qualify. We get reimbursed seventy-five percent from the state or federal government. And so those are the types of things that he's working on with the veterans to make sure that they are above the poverty level and also any services that they're entitled to, that they're able to access through the VA.
So they're able to access the services, and that our town is able to be reimbursed by the state or federal government for seventy-five percent of it?
Exactly.
So he's just, yeah, he talked about it, and I, you know, I was trying to understand the the scope here. So where he's asking for an increase in hours to do the work that was going to generate, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of reimbursement for the town, so. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that this is above-level service that has a payoff involved in.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, the next item. What is the IT?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the next item is the IT Administration. As the board is intimately aware, we have been in a long process of trying to bring on an IT specialist for thirty-five hours per week and share that position with the Town of Norfolk. Just as an aside, I can tell you it's a hot market out there for IT folks. And if anyone has any children going into the IIT profession, it's a very solid profession. I can tell you from based on how difficult it is to bring in a qualified IT professional right now. Market is hot and it's very competitive. We're still going through that process. We certainly have hope to have someone on board soon, but it's much longer than we expected. If you look at the eighty thousand dollars, I just want to point out that this is a shared position. That is the full salary amount of the position. And we're only expecting Milis to have to carry fifty-seven percent of that cost. So it shows us eighty thousand here, but the Finance Director has a reimbursement line elsewhere in the budget that shows that we'll be getting a percentage of that back from our neighboring town. And again, this builds off what essentially was proved at the Fall Town Meeting through an article to begin this position. But technically, this is the first time this would be in the base budgets. So as a result of that, it is a above-level service, general fund budget request. So as a result of that, it is a, uh, above level service, general fund budget request. But again, only fifty-seven percent of that would be what is actually needed, um, from the town in Milas.
So, uh, um. I guess this one, to me, is a little different in the sense that the town had appropriated funding for this. I realize it was in an article, but it was, it's an appropriation that we made in the fall town meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
And I can't, I can't remember what the number was, but I think it was fifty, but maybe it was thirty.
I think it was fifty thousand to cover, um, up to, you know, six months. And, uh, so this will, this, again, this amount is for a full year. And again, we'd only need fifty-seven percent of that. So again, it wasn't in the town's base operating budget at the beginning of this fiscal year. That's why it shows up as an above level service request in this year's budget.
So if my calculator is right, it's forty-five, six is the net cost.
Yes.
Okay, but, all right. The reason I'm asking these questions is to me, it's incumbent upon this board, uh, to decide how it wants to present these requests. I mean, I understand this list and I understand that it's accurate. But I also believe it is misleading because it's talking about what people do, including yours truly, is they go right to the bottom line, which says five hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and four cents of additional service above and beyond what we, uh, have agreed to accept as the four percent. But the number is really not that at all. It's much lower than that. So I think it's important for us, as we describe this to the finance committee in particular, but also to our colleagues, school committee as well, as well as the town, that we, um, certainly things that are going to come out of a revolving fund or are going to come out of a fall town meeting if we have the money are, are there, they're real. I, I don't mean it's misleading in the sense that they're not real. This is really what we're asking for in terms of total dollars. But in the context of what the question is, which is, okay, what will this board be asking for in terms of allocations of dollars above four percent for the May town meeting? I think it's a little, it doesn't tell the story that I would tell. And so we're going to work, and if my colleagues don't agree, well, then fine. But we're going to work on making sure the story that we tell is the one we intend to tell. Now, I'm interested in hearing from my colleagues as to whether or not they think I'm off here. And I'm not trying to cook the books. I'm just trying to respond to the question that we're asked.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
I think what you're getting at is precisely what needs to be done, which is whether it's another column or not. Yes, there's five forty-eight, but the reality is we need to talk about what it really means to implications for the budget, why we're recommending certain things at this time and why we're deferring them. For example, the two twenty-seven, three oh eight. Even there, we have, um, approximately seven thousand dollars that's within the cap. But that doesn't mean we don't have to pay it. It's just that we need to understand that, yes, there's thirty-three thousand deferred, that there's another hundred thousand deferred and so on. And that what we're really asking for at this time is whether it's two twenty-seven or two thirty-seven or whatever. The point is, we need to make that clear, and this does not make it clear to somebody who doesn't understand or hasn't spent the evenings with us going through the budget up to this point. So I think your point is spot on in that regard.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I was just going to say, we, you know, the finance director and I put this chart together to really illustrate to the select board the full range of considerations of financial issues confronting the, the town, um, at this upcoming town meeting. Essentially, I mean, I fully agree that essentially when it comes down to it, you could boil this item down to five or six items that truly qualify as above level service requests, um, within municipal departments that would have to be considered above the four percent. So we can certainly put together a boiled down chart that outlines those items. Extrapolates those from this chart that really encompasses everything, but maybe harder to read if you haven't been following the whole process from the beginning.
Well, I'm certainly not suggesting that it's not an accurate picture, because it is. And it does do what you, you give us what we ask, which is, okay, what, what would be the cost of these various priorities? I'm trying to recast it into a request to, um, you know, you know, there's a process that we've agreed to, which is we take the, um, the two budgets, ours and then school budget, we multiply them by four percent. One point oh four, come up with a number. Okay, that number is going to be affordable within the new revenue because we've already checked that box. And there's some residual after those two items are totaled and subtracted. And the residual is, we agreed, would be something that would be up for discussion as to how it might be applied. Now, that doesn't mean that we're going to always agree on all the priorities, but I would look at it, you know, slightly differently and say, all right, at this stage of the game, everything above this bucket here, the two twenty-seven, three oh eight, is either deferred or it has an alternative funding source, if I hear you correctly. Then we get into the two twenty-seven, three oh eight, and I would argue that the net number there is really one seventy-four, seven oh eight. Because what I do is track out the above, the, the, what I'm going to be able to pay for within the four percent. And frankly, the true cost of the, uh, IT administration is forty-five thousand, it's not eighty. But I realize the books would have to be, would have to read this way. Now, we haven't gotten to the next two items, which are the trees and the roads, so we're not home free. But I looked at it that way, and I, I, I'm interested in the conversation with my colleagues to determine whether or not they think that's a, a way to not be more accurate, but to be more responsive to the financial, uh, model that we agreed to utilize going into this budget cycle.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes, Ms. Andrea.
I agree with you. I actually do have, um, another question, though, in terms of the school. I believe there's, um, you know, there's, there's some warrant article items that would be outside of their budget as well. So should, shouldn't we have? Should we have a more comprehensive list, including some of that? So that we understand, like, so we understand where the, where the requests fall if we're looking on the whole? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I agree. We, we are trying, this is comprehensive, and theirs should be comprehensive. So yes, we're looking for this amount of money with a combination of warrant articles, revolving fund expenditures and budgetary items. The same should be the way we look at the school budget to determine that, those things. Because we know there are warrant article items, which we have always had outside of the budget. We've had this conversation among ourselves as to whether or not tree maintenance and road maintenance should be outside of the budget or not, but that's a different question. But I agree. I mean, I, I, I do think that that's the whole picture is what we're trying to get at here. And the whole picture includes a bunch of expenditures, which are warrant articles. Sometimes it's because, I think, of the vagaries of municipal finance, where we have to bring certain things up as a warrant article because of the way it's funded, like leases and whatnot. We can't just roll it in. It has to be stated separately. I don't mean it can't be analyzed yet, but anyway. Okay, I, I don't, I don't, any other comments my colleagues have? Because I, I would like to see a reformatting of this in a way that I feel more accurately presents what we're trying to do. It's still going to be, this thing that we are, like, we've asked ourselves, these are our priorities. We believe that they ought to be community priorities. But I don't want to go into it with unnecessary sticker shock, I guess, is what I'm driving at. Don't object, so that's what we'll do. Uh, the finance director, do you, and, and Mike, do you understand what I'm driving at here, or?
I think, I think you need to give us the priorities of what, I, I understand it's a general funded above service level request, the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. I realize that you want to reduce the eighty thousand to the forty-five thousand, six hundred. And that, that grouping is going to be what you're going to ask for above the four percent.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I think I, I understand, um, your point here in that, you know, really the bottom line is, as far as presenting this to the finance committee, you know, what is the, what is, what items are the select board requesting that are operating items, the municipal budgets beyond the four percent cap? And we can certainly boil that down to what those actual numbers are. If the board is supportive of the, of the recommendations as presented here, we can certainly boil that down into a, a, a much simpler chart that presents that to the finance committee.
Yes, we're not, we're only presenting the municipal side. I know the school committee is presenting their side. So, uh, that's up to them to pitch their, what their needs are to the finance committee. And then I guess ultimately, I'm not quite sure who's going to make the final decisions as to who gets what additional funding from above the four percent.
Well, if we do it right, then we will agree on it.
I hope so.
I mean, the one who decides is the town meeting. And I think we are committed to making whatever agreement we can reach before we get to town meeting, rather than fighting over it at town meeting, which is something that the formula is designed to avoid. And I, you know, I've taken, I've seen the material that the school committee has prepared because it was on the finance committee website. And, you know, they're doing the same thing we're doing, um, which is legitimate. I mean, we should be telling people what the story is, but then they're going to say, well, what do you really, what do you really want this time?
Right, what are your highest priorities? They asked the school committee last week to identify the items and list them in their priority listing. What's your most important, what's your second, what's your third? And the school committee came back and said, well, how much money do I have? And they, but I don't think that was what they were asking. They just want to know, truly, what's your number one priority? What's your number two priority?
Right. Well, that's a legitimate question.
So I think that if you, if the board determines what your priorities are, we presented our budget with these items already in it for you. We, we can reduce it, we can take out whatever you determine is not a priority or doesn't get funded. But we need, we need direction from the three of you.
That's what we're here for this evening. Okay.
Do you want to rank those?
I don't want to, I don't want to derail the conversation quite yet. I do want to go through the, the rest of this exhibit. And I, I, I think what we're going to try to do is come back and yes, rank them. But like, what I've been driving at is the ranking is, from my way of thinking, is the middle line here, not all of this.
Right.
Right.
That's correct. That's correct.
And I'm not sure that we're necessarily going to unanimously agree on what the ranking should be, which is fine. I mean, that's, that's what we're, that's part of what we're trying to accomplish here. Okay. If you could, just go through the, the other ones there, the article ones.
Sure, um, Chairman, the, the, under the, under the article items, we have for road maintenance supplies, which is basically road repair and, and paving. We have listed there fifty thousand dollars for a general fund article. And I'll be, I can certainly talk about this, um, a little bit in that. The finance director and I have discussed any possible ways we could increase that item because we know it is a priority of the board. We believe that by adjusting a few, another item within the, um, uh, warrant, we could increase that item as much as to ninety thousand dollars in total, uh, for that work. So obviously, um, I think the board is pretty aware of the need for additional road maintenance in the community. So I'm not going to go into detail on that, but I would say, you know, based on the proposals in front of you, we could go up to the item as high as ninety thousand dollars. The other item, again, the board has discussed, the tree warden is for tree removal and trimming. We've had articles, you know, some recent articles in town meetings for this. This would be another forty thousand dollar article for funding of, of tree care in the community. So that'd be, if, if adjusted, those two items, um, would be up to one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, the last two, um, because of funding constraints, um, we're recommending they be deferred at this time. And that's a full-time human resource administrator. We still believe this is an important position the town needs to consider. But, um, the funding simply isn't available for it this year. And the last item is, was the other above level service request from the town clerk for an increase in the stipend. So that, that is it for the overall list of above level service requests. And, uh, again, we have a few items in the, in the warrant we can discuss later, but that's, that's pretty much it for, for the budget items.
And Carol, you said that the budget that we have, the budget documents include these items in them.
Right, the town administrator's, um, proposal includes those items in there.
Okay.
It does not include the road maintenance and tree removal. Those are separate articles.
Those are articles, yep.
But it includes everything in that general funded above service level request.
Okay. Well, I, I would like to have some discussion about the, um, the prioritization here. But maybe I, I want to make sure all the facts are out on the table. And maybe it makes sense to spend a few minutes on the marijuana one. Uh, because I know it's a separate funding source. But I want to make sure that the select board members are comfortable with those proposals as well. And then I do want to go through the budget, uh, to the extent that folks want to ask questions about individual apartment amounts and whatnot. We can do that.
So I think, um, Karen, I think the next slide probably has the marijuana impact funds.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
I have just a quick question since what we've just been going through, the budget requests above level service and the marijuana, we'll get into a slightly different area. I was wondering if you want to have any discussion while this above level is still fresh in our minds from us or from anyone else at this stage?
Well, I do want to have conversation, but I wanted to give you a minute to think about it. And then what I want to do is just run through this quickly and then come back to, um, the board. I'm perfectly open to people making comments, but I mean, this is a point at which the board is really, it's our responsibility to go in with a prioritized point of view. Um, so. Anyway, can you just run through these quickly?
Um, certainly. Um, so looking at the chart, if you look about halfway down, you'll see the, the two items listed as data proposed funding for the spring town meeting, May two thousand twenty-one. It's both the school resource officer salary and the marijuana stipend. That is all the available, um, HCA funds that have been certified and are available for use at this time. But we anticipate, um, to be able to fund, um, the, all the additional items at the fall town meeting, assuming, uh, the board supports those and would like to go forward with them at the fall town meeting, um, and submit them to that meeting. So you can see all the different departments in their requests. So, uh, I think the, the board has the backup materials for all these requests that have come in. It's really a matter of timing and DOR certification of HCA funds, which is driving the timing of when we can move forward with these items. So, um, this is the full list of the requests. And again, I, I think that, you know, from a, from a, um, finance standpoint, we should be able to, you know, technically. able to, you know, technically afford all of them by the fall if the board is, you know, supportive of them.
So I mean, we're looking, two of these we're able to move forward with because we have the funds certified.
That's correct.
If you go a little bit further, Karen, it shows the total.
Sorry.
Yeah, we'll scroll down.
He doesn't want to scroll. Give me a hard time, hold on a minute.
The total we have is 369,877.
There it is. Can you see it?
Yep. Yes. All right, well, beyond the two that we're looking to fund in the spring, there should probably be some, there will be, I think should be, not that I can actually say, but I think there should be some prioritization of these other items before the fall town, before it's presented to fall town meeting as well. This is a list as opposed to a prioritized list.
That's correct. This is all of the.
This is just alphabetical by department.
Right.
And this dollar amount, in my view, is highly likely to be act, be pretty close to what we're going to get. So it's not lack of funding here, it's going to be prioritization of the, of the different So, okay. That being said, now that I've given my colleagues a, Ms. Underhill, you have something you'd like to ask?
I do, on, on this in particular. I don't know if, if we're too far along in the process for this type of a question, but we did talk before about, you know, the fact that there is a certain amount of money available now and that there would be more available for the fall town meeting, which is why this chart is like this. But is it, is there a reason why we need to fully fund the school resource officer upfront? Or could we do a portion of that now, include some other things here, and then do the other half of it in November?
Theoretically, you could do that with a school resource officer salary, if you want to do, cut that in half. Theoretically, you could do that as long as you were prepared to fund the other half at the fall town meeting. That would free up $43,000 for other programs listed, or requests within here. So it is certainly something that, you know, Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't think that would be necessarily, from a financial standpoint, that would be impractical.
We'd have to reduce the police salary line by the 43,000.
By that, right, by that amount, and then, and then adjust it.
And then in the fall, once you get voted, we would have to put it back.
The reason I ask, and I'm definitely not trying to be a pain, but the reason I bring this up is that there are a few things on this list that are more applicable through summer months. So if this is something that we were able to adjust, then like, for instance, extending the library hours during July and August, or summer program for developmental and physical disabilities, those things, I mean, funding that in November, I mean, could take care of it if, if we're going to do it. I don't know. I don't even know if it would, because we'd be in the next fiscal year by the time there'd be summer again. Do you know what I'm saying?
Right. And we're not quite sure when the library is going to be able to open.
Sure.
Fully staffed. And we're not quite sure about what the programs are going to be offered or available in the summertime for any of the children in the park and recreation grouping. The money obviously would be funded for use for the next year. As far as the teen, as a teen program coordinator, you were thinking of that person would have to ramp up anyway, so they'd be fully ramped up by the following summer to have their programs all set.
I mean, I, I can't recall for certain. I believe, I, I feel like this last summer, you know, in the midst of COVID, the recreation department still did some, some form of a program like this. So that, that's my only reservation. I have absolutely no problem with a school resource officer. I think that's very worthy and the individual's fantastic. But I just wasn't sure if maybe we should try to fund a few other things earlier and then finish off the school resource officer salary in the fall. I'm just floating the idea.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes, I actually like the idea that Ms. Underhill has come up with. I realize we in essence have to make a commitment for the school resource, for the school resource officer, and nobody's suggesting otherwise, but with the available funds being relatively short. She brings up an excellent point as to allowing for some summer programs, which could take place if we only commit to a half year at this stage for the resource officer. And I happen to think that's an excellent suggestion to allow some summer programs to proceed that we might not otherwise be able to fund.
Well, you know, I think that funding a position half of the year is somewhat risky. I mean, we could find, we don't have the money, at which point in time we would be laying off the officer. And there's just the whole concept of, you know, just employee relations, you know, officer, we have money for you for half a year. So I'm, I'm a little reluctant to do that myself. Honestly, some of these items, from my perspective, particularly, for example, opening the library on Thursday evenings, should be in the bucket that we looked at earlier. It's an above level service addition, which is not related to marijuana, which we're going to want to do for the next 100 years. But again, I mean, that's, that's a dynamic that we don't necessarily have to address tonight. Certainly, if we were to decide as a board to reduce the school resource officer salary recommendation from the marijuana, then that would reduce the police budget, right? By the, by that amount?
That's correct.
And the chief would then be, you know, relying on the fact that there's money, there's money available in the fall.
Correct.
Which a betting person would say it will be, because ironically, we know it's there because we've already collected it. So I understand the seasonality of this, too. That's, that's part of the issue here, right? A seasonality will tell you that the summer program, which by the way, I believe the school resource officer runs, I could be wrong, he certainly is heavily involved in it. Anyway, if that's what the board would like to do, I think the way to do it would be then to say, all right, this is the way we're going to do it, and we're going to adjust the budgets accordingly. Is that correct?
Let me just state that there's no question, we are going to fund that school resource officer for the year. We know that. And I know there's a risk, but there are some times I think it's worth taking the risk when we recognize that the risk is pretty close to zero.
Right.
And so that's the only reason that I would even ever recommend it. I do not like the idea of extending an actual individual who's an employee of the town and putting them in limbo. But in this case, unless some catastrophic something were to occur, I can't see any way where we wouldn't be able to fund it.
Well, okay, I mean, I, my actual view is that 50 to 60% of this amount should be paid for by the school department. This individual is being paid by the town or marijuana, and it's, he's largely servicing the school function. And this is a conversation we've had for a number of years as well. So, you know, perhaps there's a way to do this beyond just the marijuana funding, which is going to eventually run out. But I mean, at this stage of the game, if this is what we want to recommend, then we're going to, when we get to discussing the budget, we're going to have to make adjustments in those budget numbers. And if that's the board's pleasure, then we'll, if we were to do this, let me ask you this, Mr. Muzinski and Ms. Johnston, would we then, assuming that we, what we decided to do is apply some of the money to, say, the teen program coordinator, would we then add that to the rec department budget? Okay, but the source of the money is still.
The marijuana.
Are we asking, what do we want to do with 97,000 or 98,000? Because that's the sum of the school resource officer and the marijuana stipend. Now, the marijuana stipend is due every month or so. I mean, it's part of the police contract.
To July, July 1st.
We pay it from the beginning of the year. Okay, so that's not up for grabs, if you will. So it's the $87,330.75.
Correct.
Okay.
Chairman McCaffrey, can I ask one more question, please? I think I might be a little bit confused in terms of some of this becoming part of the budget in that the way I was looking at the marijuana impact funds is that they weren't necessarily to be expected to be recurring. So wouldn't it be more detrimental to add these things into the individual budgets when it's not budgeted for typically? Does that make sense? I don't know if I make sense.
No, no, I, I think I understand. The question is, let's start with the $87,330 for the school resource officer. Where is that money appropriated?
So that money is, will be coming in as additional municipal marijuana impact fees on the line item. And that 98,131 will fund the marijuana, the school resource officer and the marijuana stipend. That number will not continue to roll in as part of our regular budget. It's just a funding source for this year for that officer and the stipend.
Okay, but the officer, his pay is in what line item on the budget?
It's in the, the salary line. In this year, we put it in the salary line in the budget document, knowing that we were going to be funded with the marijuana impact fee.
Right. So it's in the budget, right?
Yeah, I think the important thing to remember is these, these, these funds, this source of funding has to be put within a budget. So I think the important thing, as you put it in the budget, is for everyone to remember where that funding is coming from, to understand that, you know, this is, this is a component of the department, whatever the department, that department is, is, you know, is funding that potentially only has a five-year life. So that has to, that has to remain front and center so that the town has a plan once, you know, assuming if, if this isn't extended, and we all hope it will be, but we don't know. And if that were not to be extended, we have to have a method of either moving away from that service or funding, finding other funding for that service.
So if, if I may follow up one more time, I guess my question is with that, with the 4% model that we're moving forward with this year that we've agreed upon, even though these things are being funded from marijuana impact funds, so when we do the budget next year, for example, would we be proactively reducing those budgets by the amount of money that we know we put in there from the marijuana? Because wouldn't everything go up 4% with the 4% model? Am I not making sense?
No, you're making 100% sense. No, the way that we're going to work the model is that anything that's funded by marijuana impact fees, it will not roll to your total amount that gets your additional 4%. Because it's not a guaranteed funding every year, every year it has to be voted separately.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But I guess that then from the point of view of a department head who's responsible for administering his or her budget, if we reduce this as we have discussed, then the chief of police has a budget which has in it, you know, $45,000 shortfall, vis a vis what he's got right now.
For the whole year, but it will, so he'd get a shortfall to be able to fund his budget for the whole year, but the promise would be that he would get the remaining funding in the fall.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
If the money's there, which I think it will be. I mean, that's, that's the.
Yes.
I guess that, I, I understand this, and I understand it in the context of this particular funding source, which to me has been artificially complicated by the DOR. But not, we wouldn't be having this conversation if the DOR would allow us to spend the money we already have. I mean, that's what's bizarre about this, in my opinion, anyway. So we're forced to put the money we have in separate bucket and keep it there until it gets rolled into free cash next year, when we can spend it. So, but from a, I guess, what I'm struggling with from a policy point of view is no matter what, do you take a position and fund it a portion of the year going into the year? And I am troubled by that. I certainly wouldn't do it if there was another, I was looking at another way of getting money. This one has some, you know, I see some merit in it because it's just a bookkeeping item. And I shouldn't say that, because what you're suggesting is real services to Milis kids. And that's, that's what you're trying to fund. And I, I think that's certainly something that we should consider. So Mr. Jermaine or Ms. Underhill, neither of you are muted, which means you're subject to being called on.
I tend to agree with you, as I stated earlier, that under any normal conditions, I would not partially fund an employee for a portion of the year. I think this is a unique situation. It's the only reason I even consider going forward this way. And it's not one I would hope to see replicated in the future. But given what's been going on the last year, given that it offers an opportunity for a few summer programs that, quite honestly, I think are of great benefit to the community, I'm willing to, as they say, take the risk and make the exception. I don't think it's a big risk. We also have another form if we had to, to fund it if we needed to by the end of the year. It's not something that I would like to do, but it's not like there are no funds available to carry this person forward, regardless of what happens in the future. So, so then what is, what is the proposal?
So I guess what I would propose, and obviously up for discussion, but I don't even know that we have to just cut the, the resource, school resource officer salary in, in exact half either. There's just some things on here that struck me as something that would make more sense to fund sooner than later. So, so for instance, extend library to public on Saturdays during July and August. The other two things that were related to summertime appeared to be the two recreation department requests. If all three of those things were done, that is less than what half the school resource salary would be. So I was just, I just wanted to throw it out there and propose that there's some things that could benefit people sooner rather than later if we're able to be, if we're able to be flexible with it. I think your point, Chairman McCaffrey, is an excellent one, though. I totally understand that, and I, I do agree with you. If, I do feel a little better about it, knowing that the way that the marijuana funds are working, that it, it seems to be a near certain that we'll be all set in the fall. So that's, that's why I thought I would recommend it.
Okay, goes. Carol, do you have a number off the top of your head? What do we already have in the bank? Okay, Carol, do you have a number off the top of your head? What do we already have in the bank?
Uh, right now, we have approximately, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Of H C A money that we've already collected?
Yes.
Is there another, is there another payment before the end of the fiscal year? I don't think so.
Um, there's one more payment in, um, May.
Okay, so we will get another hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Um, yeah, well, between the, um, host community agreement and these, uh, three percent local tax, yes.
Oh, I'm just doing the H C A.
We're hoping. On H C A.
Yeah.
Um, on H C A, we have been, um, averaging a hundred thousand.
Hundred.
Hundred.
So it's likely that we'll have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of H C A money that will roll over to free cash.
Right.
Okay. We just don't know.
Well, approximately, but we, we won't know the, the number.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's an order of magnitude number.
Right.
Does that include the medical?
That would be with the medical, the fifty.
Because they're going to get a payment from the medical as well.
Right.
Okay. So if we're going to do this, I guess, you know, we could make a motion to, um, allocate to these three items here and reduce the school resource officer number. And that way, it's, it's revenue neutral. And that would have to be worked into the budget somehow to make sure that we are appropriating it properly. It's, it's not clear to me, to be honest with you. You don't go back and say, you know, that list of items that we had in our priorities in the prior page, that's where these belong. But I'm certainly, uh, willing to take a motion from the board as to what your alternative would be.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jermaine.
Um, I agree with you. These ought to be on that other page in the new, new format that we're going to put together. But given that, my motion is to reduce in half the school resource officer salary and using those funds, uh, for the summer program, make sure I get this right, Ms., Ms. Underhill. Uh, the summer program participants with developmental disabilities and the library, I don't know which library opening you intended to.
July and August.
July, August.
The Saturdays.
The Saturdays, July and August. Uh, was there another one that you wanted in there?
Yeah, the teen program, yeah.
Yeah, and the teen program coordinator. Uh, to be funded from the monies that we've been cut from the marijuana stip, uh, from the school resource officer.
Okay, so, but you're cutting the resource officer by about forty-three thousand?
That's correct.
And then you're spending twenty-six thousand?
That is correct.
So where does the rest of it go?
We can either cut the police, the resource officer by the exact amount that we're going to spend, which I'm perfectly willing to do, but I, then I need an exact number. And every time I put it in my calculator, I got a different number, so.
My, oh.
I'm sorry.
So I'm going to, I'm going to rely on our finance director since she knows how to run a calculator.
So on our line, so we divided the eighty-seven, three thirty, seventy-five by two, you get forty-three thousand, six sixty-five, thirty-eight. Subtract out of the forty-three thousand, six sixty-five, thirty-eight, two thousand, ninety-six dollars and fifty-five cents. Nine thousand, two hundred dollars, fifteen thousand. It leaves you a balance of seventeen thousand, three sixty-eight, eight and three, which is, if you look at your listing, that, those numbers, twelve thousand, three sixty-five is the bridge therapeutic program for the school, and five thousand is the program for mental health linked substance abuse.
Or we could add that seventeen thousand back to the school resource officer.
That's true.
Come up with a number and say, that's what we're reducing out of that number right now.
That's true. That's true.
Which I would, after our discussion, that's what I would propose to do. So that's, those are the numbers I'm looking for.
Okay.
We just, uh, for the sake of simplicity, make the July and August number twenty-one hundred for the library?
Sure.
And we're going to give them three dollars and fifty-five cents or whatever it is.
More than they asked for.
Gratis. All right, so then it's. Yeah, it's been moved and seconded to allocate from the school resource officer number, the fifteen thousand, the ninety-two hundred, and twenty-one hundred. I think that's kind of, what's left is a little bit more than fifty percent, but that's what's left. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay, well, is that what the members of the board would like to do?
Yes.
All right, so I'll poll the board on this group recommendation. I'm going to vote no. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Okay, so we'll have to, and just to be clear, it's not that I'm, um, I greatly support the programs. I just am reluctant to cut the salary going into a fiscal year. Um, it's a close call for me, though, because I know the money's there, so, anyway. Um, so we're going to have to make that adjustments to the budget document as we go through it.
Yes.
And hopefully we'll be more expedited than we have been so far. Okay. Now, it took a little bit longer than I had planned, but nevertheless, we can go back to our F Y twenty-twenty-two budget requests where we're going to try to, um, prioritize tonight so that we have, uh, the ability to present to the finance committee, or preliminary, anyway. And I'm looking, I'm focusing on the thing between capital planning committee and I T administration, um, which, uh, because I think the other things actually either are covered by the, well, actually, let me say this again. I'd like to consider the funding for the articles separately. That is the, um, road maintenance and the tree removal when we get to the articles, the articles consideration and the warrant. But if you look at the items in the middle column there, or the middle band, the ones that are, I think we should try to come to some agreement on priority is the operational hours for the senior center, the equipment operator, the department assistant for the select boards office, uh, the increase in the department assistant for the rec department, um, and then the V S O stipend. Because the other items, um, I, I just don't see an option for the I T director. Or maybe I should say it differently. That is number one above all else. We've already committed to it. We're already working on a a joint agreement and, you know, we're also demanding something from our I T director that is unconscionable. And anyway, that's my view, so I guess I would look at that as number one. So I'll keep that in the list. So the ones that are out of the list then are going to be the dog license and the capital planning committee assistant because those are already covered in the four percent. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six items then there. So if you take a moment and just put a number next to them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I, I tend to agree with you, but I think all the items in the list, all I would do is put those three that you said take out of the list, just make them one, two, and three. Uh, they're essentially non-negotiable items. We really need, we have no option but to fund them.
Well, the two that are in the cap, we already, we don't need to prioritize them because they're already within the cap.
That, that's my point. In essence, they're already there. So you take them, we already, and we have, as you point out, a contractual agreement with the town of Norfolk regarding the I T director.
Right, okay.
More importantly, the existing I T director can't keep it going for much longer, so we need to do something. So those three, we just take out, label them one, two, three, however you want, doesn't matter. Now we have the remainder.
So it's the senior center, the heavy equipment operator, the department assistant, for the executive office, um, the rec assistant, and the veteran stipend. So if you just take a moment, and if we get consensus, then it's not going to take long, but if we don't, then it'll be longer. So there's five items, right?
Yep.
What's number one? Mr. Jermaine?
I have veterans.
Ms. Underhill?
It pays for itself.
You're on mute, Karen.
Yes, thank you.
I'm delighted to be able to point that out.
Glad to help. So we're talking after I T. I T's already a done deal, right? So, okay, yeah, so I'm with V S O as well.
I, I put V S O as number one. So that one's done. What do you have for number two?
I had the executive office.
I have the same.
Okay. I have senior center.
That's my next one.
That's my next one.
Um, I did have department assistant number three. So basically, one, two, and three is veterans office, um, executive assistant, senior center. So what's number four?
I had D P W.
I have D P W.
I also have that and then rec.
Yes.
All right, so that was fairly straightforward.
Let me just give you one piece of rationale. I was torn between council on aging or senior center, if you will, and executive office. But if I can't get the executive office functioning properly, everything else has a problem. So that's the reason I went with that as number two.
I would just like to rephrase that and to call out the excellent performance by the executive office under difficult circumstances. And it's going to be even better if they have another couple of hands or at least a half, another one hand, which is just what this is.
Very true.
Abs, absolutely.
We, we'll take any, any hands that will come in.
All right, so.
Much appreciated.
If, at this point, what I would like to do, Mike and Carol, um, I think you get the drift of what we're trying to do with refocusing this here.
Yes.
Prioritize in that middle ground. I think it's important to tell the full story as you guys are done, but I'd just like to reformat it. I don't, this is something that the FinCom, have they already seen this, by the way?
Um.
I think they have, right?
Yes, they, yes. They saw it last week.
Yeah, but I mean, we're not going to, nothing's going to disappear. We're just rearranging it to come up with a prioritization from the board as to what we'd like them to consider.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can reformat it to put a formal prioritization list in from the board.
Okay.
Which I'm sure they, they'd like to see, so.
Right, all, all we'll do is, um, put a, a column for ranking, and then we'll just, uh, rank those and put them in the order of the ranking.
And then we could total up the separate, um, ones that are, are truly above the four percent cap.
Right. Well, put something together and we can look at it and decide whether that's telling the story, so good.
Okay.
Um, okay, let's talk about, is there anything else that folks would like to talk about in those first two sheets?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, going to the host community agreement on the funds, I think my colleague, Ms. Underhill, pointed out that these items, well, you had pointed out that some of these items really ought to be up on this section of the above-level service request that we were just discussing, and I think that makes some sense. But I also.
Um, excuse me, but the reason they're on the listings that they are is that's how they were requested by the department manager.
I, I did, I'm sorry, Carol, I don't mean to say it's incorrect or anything like that.
No, I just wanted to explain why they're set up that way.
Sure. Um, but then comes the question in my mind if I'm looking at these and saying, well, suppose, and I'll just take one, after-school activities extended daycare program, and let's say the finance committee says, we'd like to see that funded, but we don't agree on a different area of funding. Are we prepared to deal with that opportunity on their part? Which I'm not saying yea or nay, I'm just saying if I were in the finance committee, and I have been there before, I would look at this as something that, these are items that I might consider in terms of the priorities, is, am I off-base in looking at that?
Well, you certainly have your opinion. I don't agree with you. I've never been on a finance committee, and as far as I'm concerned, it's the job of the board and the school committee to present the budget priorities. And I've heard more than once from finance committee members telling me that as long as I live within the guidelines of what they think's the appropriate available funding, they're not going to question my prioritization. Now, that's not all of them, but certainly, um, you know, I'm never against dialogue and conversation. But I believe it is the, this board's responsibility to present the budget.
I'm not even suggesting otherwise, but I am suggesting that once that's done, the finance committee may have some thoughts of their own, and I just want us to be prepared to deal with that. That's all I'm talking about.
Well, you're right. I've heard more than once also that they're not there to be a rubber stamp. Which I appreciate.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so can we just then turn to the, um, there's nothing in the budget, the revenue forecast that I think we need to go over unless people want to ask a question? What is different from the one we saw before?
Um, well, nothing is different from the one you saw last week.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, the only difference in the revenue picture is the items in pink, which, which was shown last week, um, which was just some updated estimates of new growth, um, and, uh, local receipts. And there was a transfer from special funds.
That's the ambulance provided.
Right.
Okay, if anybody wants to ask a question on that, yes, Kathy, you would want to ask a question, Kathy McGinnis? See, I'll see you.
Not on that, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering when you're opening up the, um, uh, your prioritization, and I have a few questions on the H C O, but, um, I'll wait until you open it up to the general public. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so let's go to the conversation on the budget itself and how this runs through, um, the budget document. And again, I want to provide the opportunity for the board members to ask questions about each item. We're not necessarily going to go through each item, but if you have a question, um, kind of like we do at town meeting, uh, is there something in the budget number that you want to ask about? But I, I would like, just from a general, um, conversation, uh, table setting, Mr. Gzinski and Carol, what, what should we know about what underlies this budget?
Well, this budget is based on the, um, on the four percent, um, increase, um, four percent cap for all discretionary departmental funding. Um, I, it does, um, include the two and a half percent, um, uh, personnel plan adjustment. Uh, it does not include any increases based on, um, both the, uh, S E I U, um, contract and, um, uh, the FIRE unit contract, which expires at the end of June. Um, it does contemplate all the steps, uh, that are anticipated. Uh, and Carol, is there anything else I'm missing as far as anything that may be kind of, uh?
No, just that we've included all of the above-service level, uh, requests that were in that category uh, that amount to the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, so you'll see that those items have been included in the requests. Um, you'll see the difference between what the department's requested in, um, in the green to the town administrative proposed budget and the variance there. We did reduce some budgets in order to, um, add those, uh, extra. We did reduce some budgets in order to, um, add those, uh, extra items that we needed in the above 4%. So you'll see that in the line items.
Hello?
Oh, you're muted.
I'm like, what's going on? Who's muted?
Uh, Jimmy.
Jimmy muted.
He's muted.
I was waiting, Aaron did tell me that, right?
I was about to, but it's okay.
I'm like, it got quiet all of a sudden.
Oh, well. Which is not a bad thing. But in any event, again, my question is, it's 4% of something. And 4% of something is what?
4% of something is the town meeting adopted budget in June, and also the increase in November, plus the amount that was needed to bring everyone back to their 100% FTE status for the reduction that happened at the VMB from July 1st to December 1st.
Okay.
Last year.
It's been normalized, if you will.
Exactly.
So what we would have spent had we adopted the full budget in, as of July 1?
Exactly.
And the amount that we didn't spend, that we didn't appropriate it, that we quote-unquote saved, that should flow, since we collected the money, it should, that should also flow through to free cash.
That would be true.
Okay. All right, so just so everybody understands, we're, we're working, the reason I'm saying this is because when we see, um, an exhibit, which typically appears in the finance committee report of multiple fiscal years as to what we've spent, we're going to see something that looks a little funny in terms of the increase, because it's going to be more than 4% of what we actually appropriated. But it is 4% of what we would have appropriated had we adopted the full budget as of July 1. That's right.
That's true.
Okay. I mean, maybe no one will ask that question, but I just wanted to make sure we're the understood. So if we go through this, um, I'll ask very quickly, so the Selectment A number here includes the increased hours for the administrative assistant, right?
Yes, and also the capital planning committee.
Okay.
Yes, that's where that, yeah, that's where that staff person.
That's where it is.
Right.
And the other lines, let's just say treasurer collector, you know, there's a 19% increase in expenses. Well, what's that all about?
On the treasurer collector line?
Yeah.
That would be that, uh, they need to fund the tax title attorney.
Yep.
And, um, that's what goes on that line. It seems like a huge amount, it's the differences between 34 and 41. So that's the difference.
It's a big percentage, but it's not a lot of money.
Right.
And the IT administration includes the 80,000?
Yes, it does.
And somewhere else, we get 45 back?
That's correct. And refunds and reimbursements under local receipts.
Yeah, okay. Now, town council, we have a big bump.
Well, that's because we, we, uh, last year, we dropped it from 90. We could cut back down to 81. This brings it back up to its pre-COVID levels. Plus, we expect to be negotiating four union contracts, um, next year. So that's why they asked for an additional $5,000 in that line.
Yep, okay. And town clerk, um, does not include the, it's, it does not include the stipend request?
Exactly.
Okay, any questions from the board members on this page?
But it does include, just so you're aware, on that $4,000 increase, that is the software for the dog licenses.
Dogs, yep, okay. How about the next page? Please, if a member wants to ask a question, uh, I'm more than happy to recognize you. Although on my sidebar here, Mr. Germaine has disappeared, so.
He's, he's there.
Very good.
You're not that lucky.
There he is.
Okay. All right, so on this one here, uh, there's not really, I mean, there was a request in town buildings that were just, which was cut back. What was the request for?
On the town buildings, we reduced that in order to, um, the, I think it was on, uh, maintenance agreement that Mr. Gazinski said that was, we were able to reduce.
Okay.
Um, the reduction on the conservation commission, you'll see on that, that was, they had put through an above-service level request in their budget line. We reached out, or Mr. Gazinski reached out to conservation, and they said that they could, take up funding that in the fall. It's for park benches and signage at the conservation sites.
Okay, well, that was on our, right?
That was on that sheet, yes.
Above service.
On that.
Yep, okay. All right. Any other questions from the board on this page? Next page. We are happily to receive a 10.2% increase in benefit costs. I mean, this is higher than it's been in quite a while. We were running in the, certainly in the single-digit increases, if I'm not mistaken, 5% and 6% was bad enough, but 10%.
Yeah, this year hit us pretty hard. These aren't, these aren't numbers we can negotiate.
Well, I understand that, but who's it, who's, whose number is it? There's the retirement plan, and there's the health plan, right?
Right, they both went up around $250,000 apiece.
And why?
Um, the, uh, GIC plans all went up. I think they went up an average of 7%. One plan went up 12%. And then on the retirement, that was, uh, the information that we got from River County Retirement Fund.
Okay. Having dealt with this for many years, it doesn't make it any less frustrating.
Right.
Because they just send you the bill, and they have no reason, and they did. Does anybody come back and say, here, so you can save money?
Um, certainly not in the insurance industry.
Yeah, but the GIC is the state. It's not United Healthcare. They shouldn't be making money.
Well, they, it's the, they offer many different plans, and so employees have the option of quite a number of plans to choose from. So it's really what the employee is selecting.
Right. Well, there's a long-term problem here that gets more annoying when it goes up 10% than when it goes up 5%.
I agree.
I understand there's a, uh, clearly, as they say, systemic issue here. All right, my colleagues. I don't mean that. Any questions on the general, the rest of the general government line? General insurance is up 5, I mean, I guess that's okay. How much do they pay us for the floor? In the gym?
That's a good question. Do you remember the exact number, Karen?
I don't know off the top of my head, but we had, we had five major property damage claims this year, none of which were things that we were doing wrong, just
No.
things that happened. Including replacing the entire roof on this building, the gym, and some damage in a fire, um, up on Walnut Street, the Walnut Street tank.
I mean, I would, is it reasonable to say the claims are more than the premium?
Well, they, their profit margin off this last, this current year is, is small.
And actually, Jim, just to note that I believe, Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that insurance went up 7.5%, but we do get a 2.5% discount by paying early, which we take advantage of.
Okay.
So if that's a small, bright piece.
I think we, we did add that discount into the numbers.
That is in the numbers, unfortunately, but that's why you're seeing 5%, not 7.5%, which is what it really is.
This includes property and casualty for the school buildings?
All.
Yes.
All insurance for the whole town.
All buildings.
Okay.
All vehicles, all everything, liability, bond liability.
I'm afraid to say it's money well spent, okay. Any other questions? All right, police, and we're going to have to make an adjustment here, right?
Right, we're going to have to make an adjustment there, and also in the, um, training, uh, wages, the, uh, police chief was, uh, willing to reduce his training wages and requested more, uh, the training wages under the marijuana impact funds.
Oh, we already told him he wasn't going to get that till the fall.
Fun, right, but that, that's where you'll see that, that, that's why there was a reduction. You're going to ask, why is there 20,000 reduction?
That training was, yeah, that training item was increased in the, um, in the anticipated marijuana impact funds
Right.
for the, uh, police, so that's now up to, uh, 45,000.
Well, this will have to be adjusted.
That's in the fall, yes.
Right, so this is, this will be adjusted for the amount of money, uh, we, we're adjusting the school resource officer salary down from $87,330 down to $61,375.
Right, okay. All right, next page. Any questions on these?
If you wanted to go back to the, um, fire rescue on the police department underneath the public safety, that $23,000 additional is kind, that's the money coming from the revolving fund that's on the above-level service.
Oh, the ambulance fund, okay, yeah.
Exactly.
Now, does the funding motion have to include payment from the HCA in it?
It will include it as part of the operating budget, yes.
So the funding source is going to include that?
Right, the funding.
That will be, that will be listed in the motion for the main, uh, budget article.
All right, okay. Next item, next page.
Excuse me.
Move to the school, please. All right, so this is then the school appropriation and Tri-County?
Yes.
Tri-County's down about 10, 9%?
Yep.
That's because the enrollment declined. I think the enrollment declined more than 9%, though, right? I think it was more like 11%. But then their, their assess, obviously, their assessment per pupil.
Right.
Yes.
Any questions from my colleagues?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Germaine?
On the transfer stations, I recall a year or so ago, we were, we agreed to sell smaller bags to help the community out. Do we know if that's had any impact? I know that you were interested in helping the seniors by offering the smaller bags. Do we know if that's been of any value to the public in general?
I cannot speak to that in detail. I can certainly ask the GPW director to speak about it at your next meeting, if you'd like. Well, it's not a high priority, I just thought if you knew, but there's, we've got so many other things, I wouldn't pursue it at this time.
Well, maybe you could just send a one-liner when you tell, determine what the impact is. Just an email would be enough.
Sure.
So on the GPW highway, I just want to point out under the salaries, that's the, uh, increase of the heavy equipment operator for loading loads. And then, uh, the GPW director did help us out by reduce, uh, finding some, uh, savings to help offset the heavy equipment operator in his department.
So it's some increase, but not as much as the total amount?
Right.
Okay. Next item. If you move to the next page, human services. The council on aging includes the number?
That includes that $45,672.38. It also includes a $3,000 for postage. So, um, that is the same amount that is included in the marijuana impact funds request.
Yeah.
But it's, uh, included here as an above-service level. So it's actually listed on the sheets twice, once as above-service level, and then the request was made as a marijuana impact fund as well. So it was, it was requested twice.
But we're putting it in as a general fund expense, is that right?
Exactly, yeah.
So that would eliminate it from the requests for marijuana reimbursement?
That's right.
Yes.
And the veterans includes the, the increase amount?
Yes.
Okay.
A quick question here on the snow and ice. The actual, for the year, I realize we don't normally, we aren't going to budget, if you will, above the, uh, 170 or the 48, uh, for a variety of reasons. But do we not show what the actual expense is, just out of curiosity?
Um, we do have the actual for FY '20. FY '21 is just the adopted amount. Right now, we are deficit in both the salary and expense line for the snow and ice, but those are items that we can, uh, be in the deficit in for the fiscal year, and then we raise it on the next year's, uh, tax recoup.
That's fine, no, I understand. I just thought, do we even put it in here? And I know we are not going to change the line item, but I just, I was curious. Thank you.
Okay, then, uh, Memorial Day Library, we're going to make an adjustment here? And Recreation, right?
Right.
And the funding source for that additional amount is the marijuana fund?
Exactly.
Any other questions on this page? Next one. The total. Now, there is a slight reduction in the debt service line.
Right, that would, that's interest.
Just an interest calculation, I mean, all right. The total debt service is 3.822 million?
Yes.
And that's both. That includes the debt exclusion, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on the budget? Have we had Kathy wanted to ask questions about the, uh, the budget or the allocations?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'd like to remind Mr. Gazinski and, um, your colleague and my colleague on the Enterprise Committee about the $378,000 deficit that the, um, municipal is taking from the three enterprise funds. And when we had our enterprise meeting, Mr. Chair, with both Mr. Gazinski and Mr. Germaine there, one of the important reasons of hiring a heavy equipment operator was to take away the burden of the water and sewer employees working for the general government, and they would be able to go back to their assigned water and distribution jobs and do the work that's been put off. So I would like to hear, um, why it is, I believe, um, number four on the list of important items, especially, um, below the senior center. Thank you. Question one.
Well, I think the members expressed their view, and it's just a matter of, we got to prioritize something.
No, I, um, you know, Mr. Chair, I, I can appreciate you and, um, but I'd like to hear, um, you know, Mr. Germaine's reasoning on this, his prioritization, if I might?
Well, I think Mr. Germaine did express his reasoning, and we're not going to get into that kind of a debate at this point. Is there another question you'd like to ask?
Um, let me just express my dissatisfaction with not having the question answered. Yes, I have quite a few questions, if I might. I, I'd like to have explained the council on aging for increased hours, $45,000 to increase the hours. Could you tell me how many hours are currently open, and how many hours, uh, are proposed to be opened with this $45,000?
I can answer that if you want. Thank you. Okay, so on the budget, above level service request put forward by the director of the Council on Aging, it's to increase the director's hours, five hours weekly, and it's actually to add an operations manager to, so it's adding an FTE to the Council on Aging. That person is, would be, would fulfill programming duties needed by the Council on Aging as well as any clerical support needed by the director. And that operations manager is 29 and a half hours per week and for a total of 35,696.18. So, it's those two items added together, amount to the 45,000. And then there's an expense line for postage for another $3,000, and that is because they would increase the mailings out to the senior citizens.
And might I ask, through the chair, Ms. Carroll, was this, in any of the documents that were presented tonight, was there any mention of hiring of an operation manager? Or did I read only that it was an increase of hours?
Well, all of this documentation was presented ever since February, when the budget documents were first sent out. So, all of this has been, the Finance Committee as well has this information since, I believe, February. So, it's the above service level request by the Council on Aging. Is there Form Number Six?
I believe, I got that one, but I believe all it was ever mentioned was on the marijuana funds only, so this comes to news to me that, that we'll bring up on Wednesday. I'm just wondering about this, this new position that if the town hall is not going to be opened, Mr. Chair, I'll be, you know, is there a discussion about perhaps, you were gonna follow up on it next week with the director, but could this item be put off until the fall when it would actually, perhaps the town offices will be open by then? Thank you. That's a question, just gonna leave it out there without a, is there discussion for that?
We already discussed the possibility, and we're gonna meet with the chair at the next meeting of the Council on Aging and talk about hours and openings.
Okay. I don't know about the other member, all your, the members of the Board of Select Board, but I talked to a lot of seniors, I'm a senior, and they're still, their more important item rather than having a manager to oversee everything is still the roads in town. And I could guarantee that nine out of every 10 seniors would rather see the roads repaired than this. So, I'm wondering if, when the director comes to see you next week, if she could perhaps bring some sort of documentation, that yes, in fact, there, the few people that do go to the senior center, are they encouraging to have it open more days, more hours, and then they'd be there more?
Well, you're certainly stating your opinion, which I don't agree with, so move on to the next one.
All right, I just, last call, I'd like to just ask Enterprise member Peter Jermaine if he'd like to answer the question about the Enterprise money being taken?
You're not gonna, excuse me, but you're not gonna direct questions with members of the board?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else?
I'm very disappointed, Jim.
Okay, that's fine.
And I have one, I have one other question that you and I worked on back a few years ago, that the stormwater money, Stormwater Enterprise that we encourage people to vote for, the fact was that this fund would lessen what we pay to Kleinfelder, et cetera, and I'm wondering if the request by the DPW director for procurement officer, has that been approved, which would take away the need to have Kleinfelder to do water testing, input data, grant writing? I see that the, I see that one of the staff has been increased hours, but I'm wondering about the procurement officer who's salary was going to equal that of the town administrator, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Gazinski?
I'm, I'm, I'm not aware of any staff in the DPW whose salary was gonna equal the town administrator.
No, not the town, the town accounted.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. There's a question about a staff, staffing issue. And is, is there a, is there a proposal about a staff, staffing to include internal procurement? For the DPW?
There is, there is, right, within, Mr. Chairman, within the DPW budget, it was touched upon on that, on that list of adjustments within the department of the staff person, but that was covered within the department of funding. So, that did not have an actual impact beyond the 4% cap. The only, the only item within the DPW budget that was going to go over the 4% cap was the heavy equipment operator. But there are, there are other adjustments within the budget that are, that are, that are covered within the DPW budget underneath the 4% cap.
Okay, I think I have one last question, and that is, there is the hiring of a new employee, not this new HEO person, but a replacement for the transfer station, Mike, are you familiar with that?
Um, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not sure what you're referring to specifically, you're talking about a new position?
No, it's, the current DPW employee is going over to the town side, the transfer station fellow. And as you know, 50% of the salary for the transfer station is being paid by the sewer. And I'm wondering if the new person, will his salary also be paid by the sewer, even though, you know, sewer work is being done by that employee at the transfer station? Could you check into that and let the Finance Committee know, please?
I'd have to have a conversation with the DPW director about your question. I just couldn't look into that.
There's gonna be a question that's gonna come from the Finance Committee, we, okay, we're alerted to the question, let's be prepared to answer it, we're in the Finance Committee meeting, is there anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to finally say that when we had the tri-board meeting, you were very, you requested comments to come from the school and from the Finance Committee on your deliberations, and in any way that you felt either committee could help you in your deliberations. And I just want to tell you, Jim, that that's what I'm trying to do tonight, to all be on the same page, and to all see that things are important, and there's no favorites being played with the budget. Thank you.
Okay, next item. Any, any further comments from the board members on the budget? All right, so we're gonna have these changes made to the budget, and you'll resubmit to the, to the board. I think that the board gave you some direction as to what to provide to the Finance Committee as well, so hopefully we'll, we'll continue this dialogue as we move forward. Now, the next item we have on our agenda is to go over the town meeting warrant. Mr. Gazinski, you're upside down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, I think you have the most up-to-date version of the warrant for your review. I think you only changed, well, let me, let me review the changes which have occurred since your meeting last week instead of going through the whole document again. So, just to touch upon the items, on Article 15, the Water System, which is the Capitol Article, one of the items listed was the Water Systems Response Plan. It had a, it had a budget number listed for 40,000, that was actually a typo, that should have been 30,000. So, I just want you to make note of that, that was the number that was submitted to the Capitol Committee originally. Just, and then next, I'd like to jump to Article 17. The Finance Director and I reviewed this item following the board's discussion last week, and, and we thought if there's any way to try to push up the level of road maintenance and repairs that was possible because of that being a priority for the board and the town. And in looking at that with the Finance Director, we do believe that we could reduce the Unemployment Insurance Fund article, which is Article 29, down to $5,000. We believe that we certainly can get through into November without any problems and be able to utilize those funds to put towards the road maintenance so that the DPW could address more of the roadways this construction season. So, that, that recommendation is before you for your consideration this evening. One other, another change is just that, under Article 27, we have included the, the language for the Select Energy, Paying a Little Taxes Agreement for the solar project that's proposed to occur on the Clyde Brown Elementary School. So, that language is now included in the warrant. And that is essentially the major changes to the warrant, since you've seen it, there may be a couple of grammatical changes, corrections made, but the, but we now feel that the warrant is, is complete. I have sent this over to Town Council for review. He has approved it as the form, with the exception of Article 27, I'm still waiting to get final verification of that on Article 27. But other than that, Town Council has reviewed it as the form and approved it. And certainly happy to answer any questions that the board may have this evening in regards to the warrant overall, or to the proposal to increase the road maintenance article to $90,000.
Okay. I have, I'm just gonna ask a question on Article 11. This relates to the Lansing Millis Memorial Building. I think the wording here is misleading. I don't think there's a proposal to set up a stabilization account for the building. The issue is whether to execute a stabilization project to hold the building, to keep the building protected while we have further discussion and debate as to what we wanted to do with it. So...
I would agree. I think that, that language in Article 11 could use improvement to, to avoid any miscommunication with the public. I believe that we could either change the language to, to, I was looking at the language of to establish the Lansing Millis Memorial Building Repair Account, or something along those lines. The difficulty here is really this, this item is for to stabilize the building, to secure it, and using the word stabilization, you know, warrant article, if it's not for an actual stabilization account is, is confusing. So, I would, I would recommend, you know, either a repair account or repair and restoration account.
Well, whatever, whatever it is, I just don't wanna make, I don't leave the impression that we're setting up some special stabilization account for this, which then the money sits there until we get around to doing the project. I mean, the proposal was to do the project.
Right.
And whether or not we're gonna have funding to, to do it, is it just, that's a different question. I don't know if my colleagues agree with that, or...
I agree.
I mean, it's just, it's nomenclature. If you could just have Council look at that.
Sure.
Okay. Now, the article on the, the purchase of the 377 Village Street, of course, doesn't have a number, and can you explain to us why there's no number in it?
Yes, that, that item, that, those articles are drawn up by Bond Council, and we have those language that is approved by Bond Council, and Bond Council does not like to put actual numbers in the articles, they, they like to put the numbers in the motions. You know, we've, we've confronted this issue before, usually what happens is that the Finance Committee and their deliberations and in their commentary and the Finance Committee flyer works to make it clear the amount of the purchase and provide other explanatory remarks so that the public understands the article. But we are following the direction of Bond Council, and that's exact language we received from Bond Council.
Okay, I mean, but we will certainly make it clear to the public what's at stake here.
Yes. Yes.
I realize it's legal, that doesn't mean it's clear. All right, any other questions from the board members as to the terms that we've set forth in the warrant? I mean, this warrant is closed at this point, and we're just adding numbers, right?
Yes, yes, the warrant, yeah, the warrant is, the only, yeah. We added some language to Article 27, and we, we adjusted, or proposed to adjust a few numbers, essentially it's unchanged besides that.
But at what point do you want the board to vote to accept the warrant and publish it?
Well, the very latest that we would need it would be next Monday. I would like to be able to take the warrant to the Finance Committee at their meeting on Wednesday and say that the warrant is essentially complete and can be discussed, you know, and have all their, you know, attempt to answer their questions, so that the Finance Committee can take their formal votes by their meeting on the 14th.
Okay, I think that's reasonable. So, we'll be able to button it all down next week.
Right, so I could probably just...
We should show it to them and say, here's where we are, and, and let's work on whatever we gotta do to put it into the right form so that we can adopt it and sign it on the 14th, or the 12th, what's the date, next one's the 12th?
Your meeting is next Monday, the 12th. They have a meeting this Wednesday, the 7th, and then the following Wednesday on the 14th.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the board? Or anyone? Any comments from the public? All right. So, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda then. This is the date and time for the town meeting. So, the board has adopted a date and time for the town meeting, which is the 1st of May at 12 noon. I believe there's been correspondence to the town administrator from folks at the library?
Yes, I have, I have communicated with the library director, who's actually on the Zoom call tonight, if you have any questions for her, but we have communicated about the concerns they have about the timing and the nature of the event they have on the 1st.
Okay. So, let's, the library director?
Hi, this is, this is Jennifer Farrar, library trustee, I'm hoping to be recognized.
I, I, sorry, I thought you were the library director.
She's also on.
Well, I'm gonna recognize you then.
Okay. I, I understand that you've been alerted to the conflict. We have put some time and a lot of money into a fundraiser, and we were hoping that we could ask you to move the town meeting by a couple of hours from the proposed date so that we wouldn't have to cancel our fundraiser. And a little background, we had to cancel it last year because of COVID, and there's been a lot of planning, and as I said, a financial, we, we take a financial hit. So, I was just wondering if we could persuade you, in the interest of neighborliness and collegiality, to work with us.
So, you were asking us to consider moving it to 2 o'clock?
Uh, two thirty would be best. Ours is from twelve to two thirty, but we would take any mercy that you are, would offer.
Okay. Um, is, is the director on? Would she like to speak to us as well, or?
I think she has the same request, and if you have a question for her, she could definitely chime in.
Okay. Um, well, I understand the, the issue. Um, I think I'm concerned about moving a town meeting that has already been published and already been communicated to the community. Um, I would ask that, uh, we did have a meeting today, uh, with the planning group. Um, and, uh, there was, I think, a consensus among that group that we should not change the time of the town meeting, uh, because of the communications that have already been made. Um, and there is concern that the length of the town meeting, uh, might be such that if we start too late, we're gonna run into darkness, but, um, happy to hear other conversations from my colleagues on the board or from, from you if you'd like to respond.
Well, I would just say, um, I would offer as an alternative, like nine AM. Um, I, I just think that the burden of moving it is small compared to the impact, um, on this fundraiser that's sorely, um, needed, uh, at the library, given that we haven't been able to hold, uh, book sales. And I feel like if we both just gave a little, that, um, that this won't be, uh, any issue whatsoever. And I just wanted to point out that we did make every effort to check with the town and note, I think Karen Burey was notified maybe informally as a possible patron of the event. Uh, but there's no town calendar that we could reference. So we really feel like it's not, um, you know, that it, that it's reasonable for us to just ask for a minor, um, change in the scheduling.
It certainly.
And we wouldn't come and ask this if it was just a regular fundraiser. This is just, it's so important that we've scheduled ten outside of Millis authors that are on the New York Times bestseller list. It would be embarrassing for us to have to cancel it.
I'm not suggesting that you're not asking a reasonable thing. That's not, that's not my suggestion. Um, I do think that moving it is not as simple as you might expect, but.
Okay.
Anyway, um.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Just wanted to speak for a minute. Um, we were notified, I did advertise the event, but the problem is, we have a lot of groups who have events. So when they plan town meeting, they don't even look at that. We do what is best for the town overall, being that that is the one biggest, most important meeting that happens in the town. So it's difficult, um, to take everyone into account. I think that's part of the problem. However, I totally get the piece for the library and that this has been planned a long time, and this is a big fundraiser, so I understand it is a difficult situation, but that's why it didn't come up at the meeting. Uh, we've had to move school, athletic events, and all kinds of things, and force people to move things before, so that's, that's the only reason why.
And I've been on the other end of this. You know, I've been involved in town fundraising from the playground to PTA.
It's, it's tough.
To, you know, to everything. I've never come with this kind of a request. It's just the gravity of the scheduling and money we've put in that we're, that's why we're coming forward.
Makes sense. So it wasn't, it wasn't that you were being ignored at all. I don't want you to think we were ignoring you. It's just, it's, it's a difficult to try, especially when it's an outside meeting. I think they had a, I know the group had a really hard time finding a time, but that's entirely up to the board.
Well, the board made a decision based upon what we were trying to do with respect to completing our business before town election. And so it's a sequence of events that really come from the responsibility of the government to complete its work in a timely fashion, which is why the date was selected. Um, and we also selected the date so that if we ran to inclement weather, we would be able to reschedule and still complete the town's business before the town election on the tenth. So, I mean, that was the rationale, but I'm interested in hearing from other members of the board as to what you'd like to consider in terms of this, this, uh, request. Mr. Jermaine?
I'll let Ms. Underhill go first, if she would like that.
Okay.
Okay, sure. Um, I, I have heard of this issue prior to now, so I've had a little bit of time to think about it. Um, I, I completely understand and appreciate that it not, e- everyone's going to have some kind of a conflict at some point, but I also can appreciate the, um, gravity of the situation in terms of, um, you know, publicly having gotten these authors, putting the money in, and the fact that the, they have not been able to do their typical fundraising. Um, I personally wouldn't be opposed to moving the meeting a little bit more in the afternoon, um, for a few reasons. Not just, not just to solely accommodate the library, but also that our town meetings can go very long. And I think we also have, um, a potential here that, um, it could be, it, there's still a chance it could be continued regardless. It, it could move on to a second meeting. Um, so I, if we started at two or three, then it seems that we would have a, a, a reasonable chunk of time to accomplish the meeting before it starts getting dark. Um, and I also, even though we don't typically do this in Millis, I don't think it's unreasonable to continue the meeting to the next day as well, if that's necessary.
Mr. Chairman? Jermaine?
I am, I look at it more like Solomon splitting the baby a bit, but, um, Ms. Farrar pointed out that if we could give a rule, they could give a rule. So I understand the commitments they've made. I think it's important to understand the commitments we've already made as a board, and, you know, it is a leg, it's a legal body at this point, having sent notices out. Perhaps, and I don't know the legal ramifications, if we were to defer by an hour, and perhaps you could move your meeting up by an hour, um, which doesn't seem to be necessarily all that difficult, that would give you a two-hour window. And I'd be inclined to suggest that the board move the meeting by one hour. Again, I will defer to the chairman because I do not know the implications of doing something like that once it's been published. So, um, I guess I leave it to you, Mr. Chairman, to.
Well, we have authority to move it. It's just a question of if we wanna move it based upon a good policy reason, and if we're gonna move it, then we, we're gonna have to double our efforts to make sure that people, um, are made aware of the fact that the time has changed. I will say that the group that met this afternoon was not in favor of moving the time, but that's, it's our decision, not theirs.
I would also submit that I think the difference of one hour for us does a couple of things. Um, it does bridge the lunch hour for those parents and others who might want to attend but otherwise have children to deal with. But it's also not going to impact terribly on how late the program goes and whether we end up completing it that day or not. I don't like to think about going into a second day, but I do believe that we have four or five hours, at least four or five hours of good daylight if we start at one o'clock. And I think that would be more than adequate for us to complete the meeting. Um, given that, I am inclined to give an hour if that's acceptable, not just to my colleagues, but to the library and my personnel involved there.
Well, that's, that's one, so now we're anywhere between one and three, which is pretty wide, pretty fiery.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Um, I would, I would argue in favor of, of, uh, moving it an hour. I, I would really hesitate to move it later than that because I think you're going to have a very long meeting. And while I appreciate, Erin, that it could go two days, this is a weekend meeting, don't forget. You're asking people to give up a Saturday and a Sunday of what is finally getting to be some warm weather, and I think it could be difficult. I don't think you're, the public would be thrilled with that. I think it would be great if we could get through it in a day. Maybe I'm being crazy, thinking it's gonna go five hours, but I've seen the warrant and I've watched our own meetings, and I know how long these things go. Um, but I think moving it to one, I would argue that moving it to one is, is a, is a nice way of, uh, gesture to, for both sides. My two cents.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes, Ms. Underhill.
If I may, I just, I just wanted to say that the weekend, um, meetings pain me as much as they could pain other people. I, I work weekends, I work three-day weekends, so any, anytime we need to do this, I need to be taking vacation time from my job. So I totally understand what you're saying. I would much rather not burn more vacation time, but if that's, if, if that's the way the cookie crumbles, then, you know, I'm, oh, I'm okay with doing that.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes.
This is, may I be recognized?
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Sandra Lane Scott, and I'm the president of the Friends. And, um, I thank Jennifer as trustee for bringing this to your attention. And as you know, with the year that we've had and the library being closed and we're still providing services, this event has the potential of recapping the three book sales that we have lost within the last year. The event has ten New York Times bestselling authors. So I appreciate the selectmen, um, Jermaine saying maybe us moving it an hour, but the publicists and publishing companies have, are already involved. Print has already happened. And we have been working on this when we moved it, um, from last year to this year, thinking we were, hoping that it was going to be, uh, you know, when we had to move it because of the pandemic. So that being said, we so would love and appreciate, um, the willingness of the board to really consider moving the time to two or two-thirty. The other reason being that we have these ten authors, and it does mean having our library director there to do a welcoming speech, be a part of it, our trustees, and really a show of people wanting to be at town meeting because we love this town, and also being able to support the library because they love the library. So my request is if you would truly considering it moving till two. And right now, in terms of, one of the first things that I heard you say was that the board was, uh, was concerned that it gets dark. Last week, leaving the library at seven PM, it was just turning dusk. The meeting is May first, so there would still be three to four hours of, of complete daylight on May first, if you were able to honor and favor this request.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments? So at this point, it's up to the board to decide how we wanna proceed. Um, I understand the urgency of it as it reflects to the library, and believe me, I'd, I'd like to be accommodating. I am concerned that, uh, the town meeting time has been set. It is on Saturday for the same reason that you're, you had to move your event because of COVID. Um, and, you know, we've worked with the DPW, with the police department, with the school department, with the moderator, with the town clerk's office, to arrange for the meeting so that we make sure that the citizens who are gonna attend the meeting, uh, are well-informed and have the ability to come in and get in and, and do their town's business, and then to, to leave the town meeting at a reasonable time. Um, so I, you know, I am, um, of the view that, you know, the town did use its due diligence to find a time that was reasonable for the citizens of this town to gather to do the town's business. So, um, if the board is interested in moving the time or the date, what we need is a motion to do that. Um, we'd have to inform the other folks, uh, who are involved in the, in arranging the town meeting, but it is the board's decision. I don't, I'm not trying to palm this off on somebody else. It is the town's decision as to how we wanna proceed, uh, the select's decision, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If I may, all, all I, all I will say to this, and, and because it's really the board's decision on, um, how you feel about, you know, changing the time at this point, but I, I will say that sunset on May first is seven forty-four PM. So, um, if the board were going to change it, I would recommend the board either, either stick with noon or go to two o'clock. Um, because I think, I think we, after five and a half hours of meeting, if we're still meeting at seven thirty PM, the fatigue would probably hit folks before the darkness well. Um, so, uh, I understand the concern on both sides, um, but I just feel that, you know, if we're gonna go through the work and effort of advertising a change in the time of town meeting, um, I think we probably should, would be able to get through in five and a half hours, um, if that, if that became necessary. That's just my estimate.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Karen?
I, I have a member of cable who just walked in who wanted to speak to this. If I turn my camera.
My voice cannot be heard. My life is not available.
Okay, I, I'm going to speak on his behalf. Um, they just wanted to voice concern that the cameras can't pick everything up if it starts to even become dusky. So the meeting will not be able to go on if it gets to be even dusk, um, according to the cable, if they're filming it for TV. So I'm just passing that along. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Jermaine? Sorry, did you?
I didn't say anything, but I'm.
Oh, I saw you did.
No, I, I am still, uh, in concern about going much beyond one o'clock for a variety of reasons. I'm perfectly willing to consider one o'clock as a deferred hour if that would help. If it doesn't help, then I feel that going to two o'clock is pushing it too late.
Okay, so, um, at, at this point, Erin, if you, if you would like to speak again to the two o'clock, let's, let's have that conversation. And we know what the request is from the folks at the library.
Mm-hmm. I mean, in, in my opinion, we're, we're talking two hours. And while I appreciate that, um, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, folks that, you know, go to town meeting and participate are, are, are pretty tough folks because sometimes those meetings are really, really long. But everybody understands the importance of that, of the gravity of the decisions that we're making. And I think a lot of those people are also people that try to support things like the library and library events. Um, the way Millis has, has functioned with town meetings isn't the only way to function. There's some towns that, you know, conduct meetings over multiple dates and times, uh, by, just by practice, that's, that's what they do. Um, there's some towns that have a set time that they must end by, and then they take up their business and continue on. Um, it's really tough to say. I mean, we had some of the last meetings that I was moderator for. I expected to be some debate and discussion where there was quite literally none. So, um, it's all a variable. Um, our, the town meeting is a, is a variable, and I do think the, I, I do think that there is a fatigue, um, layer to this in terms of how people are participating towards the end, or how much attention anybody's actually paying. Um, in that way, I think while it is cutting it closer, I mean, it sounds like we're gonna have a good four or five hours if we do move the meeting to two o'clock. Um, that doesn't seem unreasonable to me. We do have over, I think, over thirty articles, so I mean, it's gonna take, it's gonna take time no matter how you slice it. But, um, given the, the expense and the work with this event, and, and I also personally do feel bad that we don't, as a town, have a better way to keep track of all these things because that would have been something to consider. That would have been, um, something that, and I knew it was coming up, it's just not something that occurred to me at the time when we were talking about our date and time. So, in, in that way, I, I feel bad about the whole situation because it would have been something that I feel we should have considered when we set the date and time. set the date and time.
Okay. So you, of the view that we should move it to 2 o'clock?
I am.
Okay. Mr. Jermaine? You said 1 o'clock.
I'm, I am concerned that we're going to have a long meeting, and I think running it to, between 6 and 7 o'clock is an endurance factor that doesn't make sense. But I'm just concerned about starting after 1 o'clock in the afternoon. I really am.
Well, yeah, I, I'm, I have the same concern. I am concerned about changing gears, because the community has already been told what was going to happen, and now we're going to make, make a change. I understand that it would be good if we had a, a community calendar, and that's not just having, you know, software to do it, it has somebody to be in charge of it, which is always the problem. But that being said, I don't hear from the folks at the library, the notion that the 1 o'clock is going to help them much. So to move it to 1 is probably not going to really be responsive to what they're asking for. So to me, it's either move it to 2 or leave it where it is, which, I, I certainly don't want to ignore what is being requested by the library. But on the other hand, you know, I, I feel the paramount interest of the community is the town meeting, not to belittle the library event, but, so. But if you want to make a motion, we need a motion that we have to decide whether to support it or not. I think, because we're not getting anywhere at this point.
Right. I, I will make a motion first, saying that I do understand the importance of town meeting and the fact that we've already notified people. But I'd like to try to give some grace here. So I'm going to move that we move the start time of town meeting from 12:00 PM on May 1st to 2:00 PM on May 1st.
Is there a second? Well, there's no second, so we can't vote on it. Now, we could second it and then vote it down.
Can we have a few minutes to, I have to take a break anyway, and I'd like to think about this a little bit. And we could move on and come back or something.
Um, okay. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. We do have to decide this tonight.
Yes, I agree.
This is, has to be, this has to be concluded this evening. I'm happy to call a brief recess, which is a little unusual, but I'm happy to do it. It is now 9:44. If 15 minutes is, is helpful, then I will call, I'll suspend the meeting, and we'll reconvene it at, let's make it, uh, well, I hate these, I hate the word 10 o'clock, but 10 o'clock. Okay?
Great, thank you.
And I hope that the library folks understand that the reason this is a hard decision is they're making a good case. But I think there's a good case to be made the other way, too. Okay, so we'll pause the meeting, and if those who are on could just go on to mute, then we'll reconvene in 15 minutes. But don't lose, please don't lose Zoom.
Okay, we're back?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll resume the conversation. I was able to contact the moderator remotely. Moderator's view is that 2:00 o'clock time is too late, that we should start at 12.
Can I just, can I say something I thought of during the break?
After I'm finished?
Yes.
But she also assured us that it's up to the board to decide. So now that lands directly on the board's lap. So go ahead, Jennifer, go ahead.
I've lived in Millis since 1997. I've always gone to town meeting and enjoyed yourself, the current moderator, and Erin as moderators. The meetings always started at 7:00, my whole life here, and it's never been an issue of that we couldn't last from 7:00 PM, which is much later than 2:00. I mean, I understand they were indoors, but in all those years, I remember the library meeting going very late, and I remember maybe one adjournment. I mean, I'm sure your memory is longer than mine, Jim, on this, but I just, I don't see that it was ever an issue even at that late, when it was 7:00 PM. And I think what Mike Gazinski said was the most sound. If you're gonna go through the trouble of putting the motion forth to change and change the notice, that, to make it meaningful and change it to 2:00, where this fundraiser would really work, from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM would be a solid five hours, which again, I've never seen the town meeting go from 7:00 till midnight, except one time, because it then, Mike said it gets dark at 7:45. So that would even be before dusk, it would be 45 minutes before dusk. And I'll just say, I was getting texts when I spoke before that I didn't mention how deep the library is in this. We're committed, we're committed for $7,000 for this fundraiser, to put, to put out, and we're hoping to make $12,000 or more. But that's why we're very nervous, and that's why there's the urgency, that I did not mention what a pickle that we're in over the $7,000 that we're in for financially.
Okay, I understand. And I understand that this is not a frivolous request. You're not here just for frivolous requests, as far as I'm concerned. And the fact that meetings went long before, I mean, the fundamental difference here is outdoors, so that makes a big difference, as far as we're concerned, we, the town, and the community. So, but I understand that, let me rephrase. I mean, the fact of the matter is that from the library's point of view, 2:00 is acceptable, not ideal, but it's acceptable. Anything before 2:00 creates a problem that you, you've outlined, folks. Is that correct?
That is correct. What our Plan B would be to carry on if you did it at 1:00 PM and try to ask people to come for half the time, and I just don't think that's realistic. We can't move it. We can't, we can't ask those publicists to move it. So we'd have to cancel or ask them to come to half.
Don't they know it's Millis?
Yeah, they're the New York Times. You know, it's, it's a Good Morning America bestselling author, and the New York Times bestselling, they don't, you know, they're, I got them.
I'm an subscriber. I was studying the New York Times in high school, which is before you folks were born, okay? Except for somebody on the, no.
Sandra, sell him a ticket. Sell him a ticket, Sandra.
Me too, watch it.
That's both Sundays, daily, and digital, okay? Okay, so my colleagues have had times to think about this. I want to know if there's any change in your view. We're kind of stuck on, from my point of view, it's 2:00 or noon. I mean, I think that's basically where, that's my view. I'll take one or the other, but I don't think that the one in the middle is gonna be helpful to the library, so if you make the motion again, at least I'll second it.
Okay. I move.
We can discuss it, okay?
Thanks. I move that we change the start time of town meeting on May 1st, 2021, from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM.
Seconded. So it's been moved and seconded for the board to consider, no, to adopt the change in time from 12:00 noon to 2:00 PM on May 1st. Now we'll have discussion. Again, I am, I am concerned about this. I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, but the current moderator feels as though this is to start too late. She's concerned about the length of the meeting, no different than the concern we've all expressed, but I don't want to, you know, I don't want to leave her out of the conversation, because I have, she was at the meeting this afternoon, she did express that concern, that's a consistent concern, but it is up to this board to decide whether or not to make that change. And on cue.
Here she is.
Here she is. So the moderator seems to be on. We don't want to necessarily bring her into the middle of the conversation, but we've had, Madam Moderator, a significant amount of discussion with the library folks about how it's critical to them to see if we would be willing to move the meeting to 2:00, because of the nature of the event and all the planning that's spun into that event for the last two years, basically. So not wanting to put you on the spot, but we are now discussing whether or not to, as the board, to accept the move of the meeting till 2:00 PM on the 1st.
I mean, quite frankly, I will defer to the board's decision. I just am very, very concerned, based on how long we expect this meeting to go, that starting at 2:00 is going to push us into, you know, potentially, if this goes to the extreme that we think, it could till almost 7:00 in the evening. So that is my biggest concern. I totally understand where the library is coming from. This is a significant fundraiser, but this puts town meeting in a very, very awkward position from that perspective.
Thank you. I mean, thank you for finding the time to join us for, in this conversation. I don't want to leave you out of it, certainly. And this is certainly something that we've all talked about, about the trade-off here in terms of the effectiveness of town meeting. So any comments, then, further comments from the board members about the moderator's concerns in particular?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jermaine.
I very much respect what the moderator has to say, and quite honestly, I tend to agree with her. However, I do not enjoy sleeping on the porch. And not that there's any kind of duress in this, I understand, but I also understand where the library is coming from. Perhaps a little miscommunication on a variety of sides. At any rate, I hear it, and I'm considering, when the vote comes, what the implications are, so thank you very much, Ms. Giville, for joining us and sharing that.
Ms. Underhill, anything further you'd like to add?
I guess I would say similar in that I obviously have a lot of respect for our moderator, and I know it's a big job. I, it's a hard decision, but I, I can see where this is a bit of a unique circumstance as well.
And just one more comment. I mean, we've gone through a lot of planning to bring us to this point. Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry, I should have, I mean, I'm.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry about that. I'm, I'm a little tired. I apologize for not directly addressing you. We've gone through, this is going to mean, you know, quite a bit of logistical changes for us, so, you know, this is not just simply a matter of moving time, and I understand where the library stands, but I think we will have to regroup and, and think about what this means in terms of our planning process as well, so.
Yeah, well, I think that's right. I mean, perhaps I didn't, wasn't clear enough in the earlier conversation that there's been quite a bit of work spun into this up till now, and we have the people lined up, and so we will have to make an adjustment if we decide to move, to move the meeting, or to delay the meeting by a couple of hours. But that being said, I mean, we're at a point here where we really need to make a decision, because we have to communicate to the community exactly what we're doing. And I know we moved the meeting several times last year because of the COVID situation, and in a sense, we're doing it the same this way this year. I mean, the only reason we're doing it outside, is because of the COVID pandemic, so we are, you know, it's, let's put it this way, it's this unique situation, we all acknowledge that. Any further comments from the board members? There's been a motion to, to move the time of the town meeting from 12:00 noon to 2:00 PM, so I'll pull the board on that motion. If there's no further discussion. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Love to know your vote first. I'm going to say yes.
All right. So I will vote yes as well, because I might as well at this point, it's with great reservation, I might say. And I, I just, I, I believe that the library has made a compelling case. I also believe that the town meeting is the convening of the community to decide all the issues facing the community. So it's with reluctance that I go along with it, but, I mean, at this stage of the game, I'm willing to support it and ask Mr. Gazinski to reconvene the planning group so that we can make sure that this is doable, in terms of all the parties that we have arranged to support the meeting. So thank you all for attending the meeting this evening, we appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing you at town meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much for indulging us in this request. We truly appreciate it. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Moderator. We'll be talking again. All right, so the next thing we have on our agenda for the Select Board is the Community Funding Yearmarks Discussion. This is something, Mr. Gazinski, we talked about last time, that you've got some further information for us, so that we can pull things together to try and get our funding request, or earmark request into the, our US rep. So, Mr. Gazinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I did, following up from the board's meeting last week, I did touch base with, and discuss this issue with both the police chief and the DPW director. The police chief had indicated that he didn't think, he did not believe that there was really any, any funding that he could easily get through the, through the, a potential congressional earmark at this point. And he and I discussed, you know, the application form, and I think we agreed on that. And so I, I have followed up again with the DPW director, and we believe it's, it's at least worth a shot to put an application in to see if we can get any assistance with our PFAS work, in the PFAS treatment plant through a congressional earmark. I will say, you know, no matter what project we put it in, it's going to be a long shot, so I don't want to get anyone's hopes up too high, but I will say it's worth, it's worth the effort and the shot to get something in by the end of this week. So I'd be asking for the board's authorization for, for the town to submit a request through Congressman Voss's office, to request a congressional earmark for help with a earmark for the possible funding of at least a portion, if not all, of a treatment plant for PFAS. I would need to work, spend some time this week with the DPW director, some of his staff, as well as get some technical information from Kleinfelder in order to put this together, in order to get this submitted by this Friday, which is the deadline. We would be competing, again, with all the other towns in his district. He indicated he will submit up to 10 earmarks. So it's still questionable whether he'd submit this earmark, he's, he'll weigh it against the other communities, make a determination, and even then, if it's submitted, there's only, you know, a certain chance it'll, it'll get anywhere, but we think it's worth the effort to give it a shot.
Any questions, comments from the board?
That's reasonable to me.
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, we want to put in a, we want to put in a request. The last thing you want to do is not request it.
The only guarantee thing is if we don't submit it, we definitely won't get.
We won't get anything. And you've already had this conversation with the DPW director, right?
I have.
And his, and, and the chief of police and others, that they feel as though this is the best shot we have?
Yes, this is the best project.
Yes, okay. So what would we look at in terms of the request? The whole thing?
Well, we're gonna take a look at the, the information again, and study that, and see, and maybe even call the congressman's office within the next day or so, to get, try to get a little more guidance. And I think there are folks in his office that can provide some guidance on that, but we'll, we'll be doing that tomorrow if, if the board authorizes us to, to work on that, to try to get something in, even if we can get some partial funding, it would be worth it. So, you know, we would certainly take the advice of the congressman's office, if he says to submit the full, full, you know, project, we will.
Okay. Ms. McCaffrey?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I was wondering if it would help at all if perhaps the town administrator or you reached out to our other federal officials, that, you know, Millis voted for all of those people that are there now, and I don't know if you add on to speak to those people also about the terrible situation that we're in, and maybe they'll have one of their underlings send a letter to someone, you know, so it wouldn't hurt to try. I'd offer, but I'm on the other side.
Yep. No, I think that's right. I mean, we've already tried to engage our legislators, and we've had some, we're trying to set up a meeting with the DEP, but I think there's every reason to contact the senators as well as the rep.
Yes.
To say, this is what we're looking for here, this is what we need.
Good idea.
You're right.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay. All right. So are, but are we okay with the board in terms of this particular earmark request?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
I make a motion that we ask the town administrator for work with the DPW director and others to put together the earmark request covering the cost of PFAS remediation for Smalls 1 and 2.
Seconded.
So it's been moved and seconded, I'll call the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. When it's asked for money, we're easily, we're, it's easy for us to come to a conclusion. Next thing we have is the ratification of SEIU. Mr. Gazinski?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in your, in your packet is the memorandum of agreement between the town and the SEIU, local ABAB. We did have a number of meetings with them, and I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for your assistance in that process. And we did, I think, come up with a fair one-year agreement with the SEIU, and they, they did, I did find out that they have ratified the agreement. They ratified that on Friday, and it is before you first signature this evening, and I'm strongly recommending that the board formally vote to accept the MOA and, and ratify it, and so we can, we can take the next steps forward. So this one-year agreement will allow us to move forward, we can, you know, try to get the various unions on a similar schedule, I think that does that, and I think we're also in a better position to negotiate with the union from a place of knowledge, after we have the, conduct the salary wage schedule all over the summer that was approved at the last fall town meeting. So we have So we're happy to answer any questions that the board has in regards to the agreement. And again, I think it went fairly well overall.
So it's the terms and conditions that we approved in the executive session that they've agreed to?
That's correct.
That's correct. We didn't get dashboard language, did we? Think so.
I think you had it, you had it at your executive session last week. I don't know if we said it again.
Right, it was the same thing. It was, it was the one that you approved in executive session. It's just ratifying it in open session.
A half percent.
It was, you already approved it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So what you're asking us to do is to vote to ratify and execute the MOU?
That's correct.
So I'll take a motion to that effect?
I move that we ratify and execute the memorandum of agreement with the SEIU.
Is there a second?
He is muted.
Sorry, I was muted. Second.
So it's voted and seconded to accept the memorandum and execute the memorandum of agreement between the town of Milis and the SEIU covering the period July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. I'll call the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. So you'll have the documents and then we can come by the office and sign them, right? Is it gonna be all of us signing it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that, I think, ends the meeting. We had the, an executive session scheduled to sort of button down the last items with respect to the Braun property, which we've already voted to put on the warrant and come up with a funding mechanism, but we do need to just button down any last minute legal issues relating to that purchase. So I'm gonna, we're gonna go into an executive session to discuss the land acquisition of the property at 377 Village Street. When we're completed with that, we will come out of executive session and merge, merge from executive session and adjourn the meeting. So I will call the board to go into executive session. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. See you at the executive session Zoom.
Good night.
Good night.